We'll call this meeting in order. Roll call please.
Councilmember Rivas?
Present.
Councilmember Green?
Present.
Councilmember Beltran?
Present.
Vice Mayor McCurvy?
Present.
Mayor Meister?
Present. Okay, this is time for oral communication. This is opportunity to address the City Council on any matter scheduled for closed session unless additional time is authorized by the council. All commentary shall be limited to three minutes. Would anyone like to come forward? I'm not seeing anyone. Is there anyone online?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, we'll move on. Acting City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We have seven closed-session items on tonight's agenda. First item, Government Code Section 549-56.8, conference with real property negotiators. Property APN 253-018-001, agency negotiator Richard Tree, negotiating parties City of Porterville and Park Wilson H. and Park Hassan under negotiation terms and price. Number two, Government Code Section 549-56.8, conference with real property negotiators. Property APN 253-203-003, agency negotiator Richard Tree, negotiating parties City of Porterville and the County of Tulare under negotiations terms and price. Number three, Government Code Section 549-57.6, conference with labor negotiator, agency negotiator Richard Tree and Yuliana Andrade, employee organization City of Porterville (I apologize) Employee Association Management Confidential Series, Portable Safety Support Unit, Portable Police Officer Association, Porterville City Firefighter Association and Fire Officer Series. Number four, Government Code Section 549-56.95, liability claim. Claimant Ruth Gail Peradez, agency claim against City of Porterville. Number five, Government Code Section 549-56.95, liability claim. Claimant Myers Funeral Service, Jason Wise, agency claimed against City of Porterville. Number six, Government Code Section 549-56.9D1, conference with legal counsel. Existing litigation, D. Corvin through his guardian, had--is that Lydium?
Adlitem.
Hadlitem, C. Andrade versus City of Porterville, Tulare County Superior Court case, number PCU 321021. And finally, number seven, Government Code Section 549-56.9D3, conference with legal counsel. Anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation. Six cases in which facts are not yet known unto potential plaintiffs. Okay, thank you for that. We'll go into closed session and reconvene at 6:30. Thank you.[185.04]
Thank you, Mayor, on item number four and the claim of Ruth Gail Paredes on a motion by Mayor Meister seconded by Councilmember Green in a five-zero vote, that claim was denied. With regard to number five, the claim of Meyer's funeral, Jason Wise on a motion by Mayor Meister seconded by Councilmember Rivas in a five-zero vote, that claim was accepted. Thank you.
All right, thank you, City Attorney. Okay, at this time I'd ask you all to stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Green, and then please remain standing for invocation.
Please, Salobe, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If anyone would like to give an invocation, please come forward at this time. You're, come to the mic, and more than one person can pray.
Dear Lord, we ask you today to come to the city council and put your hand in guidance on them so that the decisions they make are according to what we call the Christian law that should be right for everyone. Dear Lord, we thank you for blessedness with the council that we do have and the councils in the past. We also ask that everybody here that has a voice tonight gets a fair listening to and that the council will look at it and hopefully, you know, pray and get the right decisions on what they make. Because, Lord, we know you are the ultimate judge. You are the reason we're all here tonight, and we give you all the blessings. In Jesus's name, amen.
Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else at this time. You may be seated. Okay, we have some presentations. First, we'll start with the recognition of former Mayor Kelly West. If the families here in the audience, if you come up forward to the podium, it'd greatly be appreciated. Well, I just want to thank you all for coming here today, just to start with, and I'd like to, we have a certificate of recognition of your grandfather, father, uncle, whatever he was to you. He was instrumental in our city and a former mayor. We'll be flying the city flag at half-mast for a week in his honor. And with that, I'd like to read some of his accomplishments while he sat in these seats on this dais. So, "In honor and remembrance of Kelly West, a dedicated public servant, longtime city council member and former mayor of the city of Porterville, this certificate is presented with deep appreciation for his years of exemplary service to our community. As mayor, he led with a vision and conviction overseeing the successful passage of Measure H, a transformative initiative that continues to fund vital public safety services for the Porterville Police and Fire Departments in support of local literacy programs. During his tenure on the city council, he was a passionate advocate for infrastructure development, improvements to the east side of town, expansion of the city's airport, and the advancement of rural communities. His commitment was also evident in the opening of the Heritage Center. Mayor's West's steadfast leadership, deep civic pride, and unwavering advocacy for the people of Porterville leave a lasting legacy. He will be remembered not only for what he accomplished but for how deeply he cared for his community. It is grateful recognition of a life devoted to public service." Thank you all for being here. Now, I'd like to pass it to Vice Mayor. He'd like to say a couple words.
It's always great to pause and remember great leadership, and, you know, there's a saying that character is the only thing that walks back from the tomb. And Janice and Kelly were great leaders in this community. They were faithful to the church and the community in ways that is rare. And it's really important that we recognize that, and it's important also that we recognize that it's faith in family and freedom, and he stood for that. And it's really important that you guys came out tonight to celebrate this. This is important to celebrate the life of Kelly and Janice as they supported this community throughout their lives and the surrounding communities. And I just wanted to say thank you for coming out. It's just a great example in the community, and you always want to recognize that when you have an opportunity. And it's a rare event sometimes, but this is one of those times when we really want to celebrate Kelly and his leadership in our city.
Well, if anyone would like to say a word, you're more than welcome, and then if not, could we take a picture with you guys with our certificate for? And then if not, could we take a picture with you guys with our certificate for?
Real quick, for the family, we would really like to thank you guys. You know, sometimes your recognition does come after death. We always recognized our dad, grandfather, as a superstar, because he was. He was always an advocate for small towns, the weaker guy, the guy took advantage of. And a lot of people just didn't understand my dad. You either loved him, or you hated him. But let me tell you, if you loved him, he'd go the distance for you. But thank you very much for what you guys did for us tonight, and the honor.
Thank you, West family. And remember, the city flag will be at half mast for a week in his honor.
Thank you.
You guys want to take a picture?
I don't know where they want us.
Excuse me, we have thirty office rooms.
I got it. Yes. Ready? One, two, three.
Thank you all for sacrificing your time with your large grandfather.
Thank you very much. Really good.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our next presentation. And this is some employee recognition, and this is some fun stuff. And so, I have a statement here to read, but can I get our Chief of Police, Jake Costello? And, I'm messing up the Detective Angel Flores. If you're here, sir, if you guys would come up to the front. So it's a great honor to have you both up here again today, and this is just another example of Porterville's finest, doing what they do best, going to work and protecting our community. So as the mayor of the city of Porterville, it is my honor tonight to publicly recognizing and commend two outstanding members of the Porterville Police Department whose actions exemplify the highest standards of law enforcement and community services. Between May twelfth and May nineteenth of this year, our city experienced a series of alarming incidents, three separate armed robberies. These crimes occurred at Walmart, Pizza Hut, and Kentucky Fried Chicken, all well-known businesses in our community, and involved a lone suspect who used a knife to threaten and intimidate victims in broad daylight. These were not just criminal acts, they were terrifying events that shook the sense of safety for employees and residents alike. But as it so often the case, the men and women of the Porterville Police Department rose to the challenge. Thank you to the swift action through investigation and committed teamwork of the Porterville Police Department, and in particular, Police Chief Jake Costello and Detective Angel Flores. The suspect was quickly identified, pursued, and taken into custody. Following the robbery at Pizza Hut, on May thirteenth Detective Flores and members of the General Investigations Unit began piecing together critical evidence, including surveillance footage and witness statements. Then on May nineteenth, just minutes after the robbery at Kentucky Fried Chicken, officers and detectives saturated the area, and it was Chief Costello who located the suspect. Chief Costello and Detective Flores were able to safely apprehend the suspect, bringing an end to a week-long service of violent offenses. Through further investigation, Detective Flores and his team were able to link this individual to all three incidents, including the original robbery outside of Walmart. Thanks to these efforts, the suspects now face multiple felony charges, including three counts of armed robbery and one count of kidnapping. At the helm of this outstanding police department is Chief Jake Costello, a man who, as many in this room know, is far more comfortable giving credit than receiving it. In fact, I've been told that Chief Costello would rather shine in the spotlight of his team every single time. And tonight will be no exception. But let me be clear, Chief Costello, Costello's steady leadership, his deep investment in officer development, and his unwavering presence behind the scenes are exactly what makes outcomes like this possible. Chief Costello and Detective Flores, your diligence, professionalism, and leadership brought a swift resolution to a dangerous crime spree. You not only brought justice to the victims, but also helped restore a sense of safety and reassurance to the people of Porterville. On behalf of the City Council and the entire community, I extend our deepest thanks and official commendations for your service. You remind us all why we are proud to call Porterville home. Thank you, and well done. So, you know, this was a big deal, and Chief, there's, when I heard some of the things that went down, I went, man, that's our Chief of Police, it's just amazing. And we had to take the time to recognize both of you for the work you do every day. That's why I call you Porterville Finest. You guys are great, man. If you have any words, we'd love to hear it.
Well, first and foremost, thank you. Second, I have Assistant Chief's job open, if anybody's interested. My staff knows I don't like surprises. This was a surprise. But like the mayor said, the credit goes to the team, to the detectives and the patrol officers, officers that set up the perimeter, the drone operators, the K-9 officers that were out there. I just happened to be in the right place at the right time. Detectives did a great job over the course of a two-week investigation, put a lot of evidence together, collected a lot of information on crime scene and witnesses and videos. They did an outstanding job, and the credit goes to them. So, I'll let Detective Flores say a few words, but thank you very much for the opportunity.
Hello, I'm a bit caught off guard. Yeah, just thank you to the police department, my team. None of it would have been possible without them. You know, it takes a lot, takes it, like he said, the drone operator, perimeter, everything like that, and obviously the chief as well, so. Yeah, thank you, thank you for the recognition.
Thank you, guys, and you, this is just what you do every day, and I get it. So it's just normal business for you guys, but for us citizens, it's scary, right? We hear about it and we go, wow, these guys really going after it. This is the hardest job in society, is what I like saying, and it's the truth. One thing I gotta talk about, our chief here, grassroots. He came from the bottom, worked his way to the top, and to hear, you know, he's administrator nowadays, right? You're not necessarily the boots on the ground, but to hear our chief going out and helping make it arrest, getting dirty, that's what I like to hear here in Porterville. So it's a great honor to be able to present you guys tonight. Would you give us the honor of taking a picture with us?
Of course.
Awesome.
And for the families, you're more than welcome to come and take a picture of them with us. How are you guys going to do, or do it outside, or do you have to?
Do you have any to your photo? One, two, and three. Okay, hold on.
Where's my phone?
One, two, and three.
So the families, thank you. Thank you for sacrificing your time.
Alright. Okay, we're gonna move on to oral communication. This is the opportunity to address the council on any matter of interest, whether on the agenda or not. Please address all items not scheduled for public hearing at this time. Unless additional time is authorized by council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes.
Well, good afternoon, Darren Garrett, my address is on record. First, I just wanted to commend you guys how good of a job you're doing. I mean, I could see the change in downtown, nice and clean. Talked to a lot of my friends, I own businesses, said the homeless problem is starting to clean up. Those guys are really doing a great job. I came in today because I think that today, yesterday and today was a lot of wasted time, not only for a business owner and a young man that's becoming an entrepreneur. He came in to get a city business license, it started yesterday, and he doesn't have a physical location in the city of Porterville. So, they said, well, give us your, all this information, so he gets it all, and then they tell him, well, it's gonna be three and a half, four weeks before you get your business license, because it's gotta be routed through all the departments. So I called him today, and I'm like, well, where are you at? He goes, well, I'm in the truck, on the phone with the contractors' boards for the last two hours, trying to get a copy of my original contractor's license, because I have to submit that. I said, well, just pull it up online, and email it to him, it shows it right there, but they told him they wouldn't accept that. So then I came down here after a few phone calls, what I thought was a waste of the young man's time, a waste of my time, and especially a waste of the city's time. The fire guy Clayton, you know, it's a waste of our time to have to call him and get him on the phone, and then a waste of the Chief Building Inspector James's time, and then a waste of the city manager's time, for something that could have just been resolved over the counter very simply, you know. So as the process went on, I came back and I was very polite, and I said, you know, we don't, the city, they don't need to look at all of this, this is if you have a physical location, so we're wasting a lot of time. But, you know, we got turned away again, and it was like, well, you gotta submit the paperwork and wait three and a half to four weeks to get your city business license, so he could pull a permit on a project that he had here in Porterville that he was supposed to start tomorrow, so the customer actually canceled the project on him. So I made a phone call to the city manager, and thank you very much. He stepped in, I made a phone call to Clayton, which, you know, Clayton is always, I mean, he's always there, man, he wants to resolve a problem, you know, and he tells us how to resolve the problem with common sense. And the same thing with the city Chief Building Inspector James. Those guys are always, they go beyond the distance to try to help small business owners out, to get us, to try to resolve the problem. But as we continued on with this, the customer had called and actually canceled the job with this young business owner, because he couldn't start the project tomorrow. And so we kind of went on and on, and at the end of the day, the lady calls and says, well, you could come and picture, set business license up. So the young man goes back and gets the business license.
Please summarize, Mr. Garrett.
I had to intervene, and he got the project back. But what I'm saying is, some things could just simply be resolved with a little bit of common sense, instead of taking up the city's time to take care of all these little bitty issues.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett.
Hello, my name is Rick Solins. Once again, I love what you guys are doing downtown. Got with Sarah the other day on the bike thing, the trails you guys got going. Super appreciate that, man, everything looks good, like the direction. I would like to tag off on what Darren said, because I came down here with him to do some zoning changes on some property that me and my wife own, and stuff along those lines, and I was listening to his conversation. So I own GNS Electric, I'm from San Francisco to San Diego, Las Vegas, and Alaska. We estimated we pulled fifty-two hundred permits over the last twenty-one years. Every city that I've got to go into, I've got to turn around and get a city business license. I walk in the doors, give them my information, they hand me a city business license, I go to the permit office and I pull the permit. In the state of California, we've worked in almost every town around here, or up and down the state. There's two states, and there's two towns that I just, it's very difficult for me to work in. Fresno's one of them, Porterville's the next. There's not a whole lot of common sense here. I bought two houses on Putnam, and we just wanted to put little lean-tos over the front doors. We're fixing the houses up, just trying to clean them up, make them look nice. I called one of the city inspectors, love the city inspectors, stuff along those lines, but they started running me through what it would, what I would take for me to put this little porch-like setup. We just, it was so cumbersome, it was like, just forget it. And that's what we do with Porterville, we're wanting to extend our portfolio quite large. We're winding down our business, now we're gonna expand into real estate and investment. We looked to invest in a lot downtown Main Street, I'm not gonna touch it. And we had, we were gonna buy quite a few of those properties and fix them up. We were hoping you guys were gonna do like in Visalia. But there's just, it's difficult, is what I'm trying to say. And I don't understand why it has to be so difficult. When I go in those doors, I'm frustrated when I leave. With the exception, I went in there today and I talked to a young man named Garrett. Exceptional, he helped us a lot. We're looking at developing two-piece over there by Sarajevo District Hospital. He was very informative, I was very appreciative of that young man. But I just think that if we're gonna get this town revitalized and change the culture in here, we're gonna have to start making it a little bit easier for investors to come in here and do some of these things. That's about all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Solins. If anyone else would like to come forward?
I'd like to apologize for the interesting introduction, because I'm a little nervous, this is my first time participating in the, addressing the council.
You're doing a great job, state your name for the record.
Alright, my name is Luis Gonzalez. I am twenty years of age, and I just would like to say how how appalling it is to see so much professionalism in this room. My question is in regards to road infrastructure, because I have heard a lot of incidences of accidents happening in our roads, especially by, I believe, Kanai Avenue, Morton. And I was wondering if there would be any updates on how the roads are developed, or if there is any updates on any security safeties that needed to be implemented.
We can't have open conversations, but we thank you for stating your concerns on what's going on in our city. And you still have roughly two minutes to speak, if you'd like to make any other statements.
No, thank you, that would be about, that is my main concern, that I bring to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Anthony Holt, I'm speaking on behalf of the Grizzlies Youth
I'm speaking on behalf of the Grizzlies Youth Football and Cheer Organization. We're a nonprofit organization who serves the community from ages six to 14 years of age. We've been in the city for four years now. We're growing. We're teaching the kids discipline, teamwork, and what it means to be bigger than something themselves. I'm here asking for any type of sponsorships to help pay for the kids' registration. Right now, our registration fees are currently $200. We have several families who are in need. The total count as of right now is 11 family members who might not get to play if, you know, I don't go out and try to get sponsorships from businesses, or in this case, the city. Another thing that I'm looking to help with the finances would be the helmet reconditioning for player safety. Every two years, helmets come up for reconditioning, and those cost $57 each. We have about 125 helmets, and so it totals about $7,000 every two years. Usually, we cover this with gate fees and registration fees. There are other fees associated with the program. But, you know, with your guys' help and consideration, we would, you know, put up a banner if you guys do that type of thing. We could put it up at all home games. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Holt.
My name is Ben Miller. I was competing a while back. You guys are voting on $111,000 to wrap, what, one bus? In that flag thing? It's all it seems, one? And where does $111,000 came from? What coffers did you take it from? Is it from maintenance? You need the maintenance on the buses more than you do that? Or from tricking the routes, in the bus routes that people need services in? Any answers? I'm going to ask you a question. Where'd the money come from?
We're not going to engage in conversation. Just state your comments for the record, and we'll address it accordingly.
So just stick your head in the sand again.
Thank you, sir.
Counsel, my name is John Coffey, and my contact information is on file. I read with interest that the coun-
We got a fire. You're all right, keep going.
I read with interest that the council is considering waiving $3,348 in legal reimbursement from somebody who broke the law, but who is on your side of the current political divide. I can understand that this is, as we are a very rich city, and that we can just throw money away to rewrap buses, which many in the public do not like, by the way. Wouldn't that money be better used by, oh, I don't know, maybe fixing more city streets or something else useful? When I was growing up here in Porterville, there was a rule of thumb for city council members, whenever, fix the potholes. And we have more than our fair share. I understand that you have your vanity projects to take care of, though. As a United States Army veteran, I want to thank all, I want all of us to remember the 250th birthday of the Army and the sacrifice many members paid, sometimes the ultimate price. Also, remember, this was not for the vanity of a would-be king. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coffey.
Hello, my name's Ken Whitman. My information is on record. I'd like to thank you guys for doing the work that you're doing, especially these men over here and ladies for your work in the city of Porterville, which I'm vested in. I've been here for five generations. I did notice in the paper last month here, we discussed the signs and permits and violations. And I appreciate you guys taking a look at it. I do, I'm vested in that. I am, got some skin in the game. You know, the people at Development, they work hard. I understand that they do their job. I really hope that you guys can look into the past, find out why these things started, who started them, who funded them, and what their goal was to accomplish whatever year that took place, and where maybe it went sideways. I'm not sure why, how they got straight into the direction that I feel that they ended up going into. You know, the, I get a lot of information about, you go in to get in a fine, you could get building permits. It seems like it's redundant. That has really nothing to do with signs. A lot of signs in Porterville, very few signs I see to me qualify to really equal, that was put up with a building permit, that was put up and was compliant. How many letters go out monthly to ask people to become compliant? And how many of those letters do people become compliant to? How many of those letters of the percentage that are not compliant go to code enforcement? How many of those code enforcement people get compliance? Do they pick and choose who they pursue? Do they actually issue fines? And how many of those fine people are compliant? Are they just okay to ignore it or to pay the fine and leave the signs the way they are? There's got to be a way to resolve this that's fair to the business people. And I just really appreciate you guys looking into this, and hopefully, we can resolve some of these issues to make sure that it's a sign issue, not a compliance issue, if that makes sense. I hope it does. That if we're here to get building permits and issue fines, then I don't think that's the department, I don't think that's their job. So I appreciate you guys being here, and thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Whitman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Greg Woodard. My business address is 1055 West Morton Avenue. I'm here tonight because of item number 19. Other than being a scheduled matter that doesn't necessarily allow for public comment, I just wanted to give you my comments of support in changing the way it's done. I realize that this is a system that's been in place since 2013. But as you've probably seen, and I haven't had the opportunity of meeting a couple of you gentlemen, but look forward to that. But several of you that I've spoke to, you realize and know that just because we did it that way in 2013 doesn't mean that we need to do it that way today. And the success is what we're all after. We're after the success of Porterville. We're after jobs being created. Every time a development comes in, it's generally worth millions of dollars. It puts hundreds of people to work. It generates a lot of money in sales tax, generates more money in property tax. So the more we can streamline that process without being a foul of the law and being able to have that flexibility to the developer and to the applicant, whether it be a homeowner trying to put in a front porch, or whether it's a developer putting in hundreds of houses. It doesn't make any difference. It's all about the success and providing a better quality of life to our community. And the more we put people to work, the more money is spent in retail, the more money is spent in restaurants. It's a multiplying effect. I believe that in my former life as a home builder, we estimated that for every dollar spent in the community in a development that it generated somewhere between $5 and $7 that it flowed into the community. If there's one item in here that I would suggest of the options that you have tonight, it would be a modified option number two, where the city is allowed to select, have a group of consultants to select from. But at the same time, the developer, if the developer has someone that they would like to recommend or that could be on that list that they would like to use, I think there should be some kind of a review process by staff to say they're either qualified or they're not, and allow them to use it. The other recommendation that I would modify, number two, would be to also say that in the cases of a negative deck or mitigated negative deck, that, you know, what used to be about 18 pages that could be filled out in less than an afternoon could be done by city staff or even the developer or the applicants.
Please summarize, you've got 30 seconds, Mr. Woodward.
That's the summary. There is simplified ways of doing it. If it, if, and after being here for 37 years and working here, I'd be glad to direct you to some guys that are way smarter and know a whole lot more about where the bodies are buried than I do. So just want to recommend the modifications of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodward.
Frank Neely, address on record, Fernando. What you're receiving, the top document is the Gay Agenda. I recommend you read it. It's a 250-year-old document. That's all the gay community wants.
I don't want it. Thank you.
You don't want it? You don't want the U.S. Constitution? The other document you're receiving is three pages. The top one is why we don't need straight pride. First reason is, every day is straight pride. The last one is, you don't have to worry about your life being threatened for being who you are. Second page is a photograph from Los Angeles. This is the U.S. Marine Corps illegally arresting a veteran for going to his VA appointment. You claim to be so veteran-friendly. Do you agree with what the president is doing in Los Angeles with the National Guard and the Marines? Because if you do, you're hypocrites because you don't believe in home rule. Because that's a violation of home rule of Los Angeles and the state of California. The third page is 18 U.S. Code 1385. So one sentence code that basically says the U.S. military shall not be used against the citizens of the United States for law enforcement purposes, which is exactly what Donald J. Trump is doing in violation of law. The other thing is, two of you have no ethics at all. You voted on an item in closed session that you should have recused on because you have political affiliations with the person that was voted on. To me, you are just hypocrites and idiots.
Thank you, Mr. Neely. Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward at this time?
Did you go twice or just once?
No, just once, sir. There's another opportunity for oral communication at the end of the meeting. Is there anyone online, Fernando?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, we'll move on to our reports. Acting City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item is a report from the Two Talk Commission. Do we have anyone from Two Talk here?
You know what? I apologize. Let me take that over. So I'm not seeing anyone from Two Talk. We'll move on to Staff Informational Report, Water Conservation Phase Four Status Update. Just the update, council has received the update. Is there any questions for staff? I'm not seeing any? All right, you get off easy tonight, Assistant City Manager. Moving on to Freedom Express Shuttle Service Update for Freedom Fest 2025. Is there an update?
Yes, Your Honor. I just provided an update in the staff report that there's an additional stop that has been identified and published. As we make our way towards the Freedom Fest, we will have a stop at the Lowe's parking lot. So folks that want to take public transportation to Freedom Fest, they can catch a ride at the Lowe's parking lot. And then second, to follow up on a question that the council asked regarding the age limit. Passengers need to be 13 years or older to be able to ride without a guardian.
Thank you for that, Mr. Tree, and thank you for stating that on record. Is there any questions for staff, for my colleagues here? Bringing it back to council. I'm not seeing any questions. So we'll move on to Strawn versus the city of Porterville, report by a city attorney regarding council action to consider judgments satisfied. City Attorney.
Do you want me to just state or summarize the report? Or do you have any questions?
Yes, would you summarize the report, and then we'll bring it back to council?
Sure. So it's just a report on council action to consider the judgment satisfied on action that was taken in closed session at the last meeting. The case was handled, just to summarize, the case was handled via special counsel appointed by the city's Employment Risk Management Authority. The city prevailed in the case with a successful motion for summary judgment. As is generally customary with any case where the city prevails, the city as the prevailing party is entitled to reimbursement of its legal costs from the other party. In this particular type of action, the city is generally not entitled to have the non-pervailing party also reimburse the city's attorney's fees. And that was the case here, so that was not the issue. The costs incurred by the city excluding attorney's fees, but including filing fees, deposition costs, discovery, reporter, transcript costs, amounted to about $9,036. That was applied for confirmation by the court. And on April 9th, the federal court adjusted those down to a cost bill of $3,348. The city's special legal counsel notified our office that an abstract of judgment had been filed but had not been recorded. So I asked that he hold off pending potential further consideration and direction from the council. During closed session at June, on the June 3 meeting, the city council took action to deem the judgment for the city satisfied and directed the city to not engage in further efforts to collect the costs from Ms. Strawn. That was on a 4-0-1 vote with council member Beltran abstaining. This office has contacted the city's special counsel and relayed the action taken, which I did get confirmation of, by the way. And the city will cover its costs through its self-insured retention. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. And bringing it back to council, does council have any comments?
No comments on that.
Vice Mayor, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I do. I have a comment. This happened during the COVID.
Yeah, 2021.
Yeah, it was a YouTube sensation. We violated citizens' rights in these chambers, and we took them out of these chambers, and they were not allowed to come back to these chambers. And so we silenced them in the name of health. So there was a lawsuit, and this person did not get a jury. And it really is a bad thing that happened in our chambers, and it should never happen again. And I think waiving these fees is the least we can do to get closure to this issue because we went too far. We were heavy-handed at that time. I remember the time, in a lot of different areas. And I think that it's important that we recognize this. We shouldn't be silencing anyone. We have people that can come up here, and they can be angry, and they get to say their piece. But at the end of the day, free speech is in the Constitution. And what we did is we violated this person's rights, and we took them out of the chambers, and we didn't give them their free speech. I think it's important that as a city, we recognize it, we get closure on it, and we move on because we have to learn lessons sometimes. Sometimes we make mistakes. And in this case, I believe it was a mistake. And as I sit here today, I still believe it. And I think that it's the right thing to do for this council to get closure here and try to mitigate that and heal from that so that we don't do it again, and we learn from it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I just got to state for the record, and it is great to get closure on this and also learn from this lesson and how important local leadership is. If we have petty tyrants in these seats, this is how the city will rule. We arrested a senior citizen for not wearing a face mask properly in these chambers. That direct action is a reason why, part of the reason why I'm in this seat today. It thrust me into taking local action. I am glad to have closure on this issue. Let's move on, and let's create an ordinance for the future to protect medical freedom and individual liberty. And if I do have a bias, it is for freedom and liberty. And I will continue to stand on that bias and live from that fashion. Okay, with that, we'll move on to consent calendar. All consent calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these matters unless a request is made, in which event the item will be removed from the consent- unless a request is made, in which event the item will be removed from the Consent Calendar. All items removed from the Consent Calendar for further discussion will be heard at the end of the Schedule Matters. How would council like to go forward?
Mr. Mayor, on number eight, I have a proximity conflict, so a technical abstention on that, number eight, because of where I live. But otherwise, I don't, I don't want to pull anything.
Okay. There's a, a, City Attorney, just for legal advice, with him stating that on record, we're good to go forward, and he's able to vote on that?
Yes, because it's Consent Calendar, so his abstention will be noted on that item for the record. He, he's abstaining on that item, even though you guys are going to vote, you can vote your vote on the Consent Calendar.
Okay. Is there any other agenda items that'd like to be pulled, looking for a motion?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll make a motion for the staff recommendation to go forward with one through fourteen.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, we'll call for the vote. Passes five-zero. All right, moving on to our public hearing. Status of vacant positions as required by A.B. twenty-five sixty-one. City Manager, Acting City Manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. I ask Ms. Andrade to provide staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayors, members of the council. California State Assembly Bill twenty-five sixty-one, which took effect on January first, twenty-twenty-five, establishes new requirements for public agencies regarding and tracking the reporting of job vacancies. Under this law, public agencies must present the status of their vacancies in a public hearing before the governing body at least once per fiscal year. If the number of job vacancies within a single bargaining unit meets or exceeds twenty percent of the total number of authorized full-time positions, the city must, upon request of the recognized employer organization, include specified information during the public hearing. Following a review of all six of the city's bargaining units, none currently meet or exceed the twenty percent threshold. Vacancies rates for all units are detailed in Exhibit Eight. To combat the vacancy rate, the city's employees, the city employs various recruitment strategies, including posting vacancies on the city's website, recruitment portal, industry-specific job boards, and city social media platforms and local newspapers. In twenty-twenty-four, the council also approved the purchase of NeoGov. NeoGov is one of the most highly-used recruiting software programs for many public agencies and makes it easier to contact and engage with applicants. The Human Resources Office has seen an increase in the number of applicants who respond to recruitment since the software's launch in October twenty-twenty-four. The recommendation tonight is that the city council conduct a public hearing and review the vacancy report in compliance with A.B. twenty-five sixty-one, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Julie. Okay, we'll open the public hearing at seven-twenty-one. If anyone has any comments, please come forward at this time. I'm not seeing anyone. Is there anyone online, Fernando?
Yes, Your Honor, I do have one individual wishing to speak.
Okay, bring him in.
Hello, Mr. Flores.
Is this only to be able to speak on this, or can I still speak on the Strawn case?
There's opportunity for oral communication at the end of the meeting. This is for the public hearing for twenty-five sixty-one.
Okay, sorry about that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Flores. Okay. All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing at seven-twenty-one. Bring it back to the council. Does council have any questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any. I'm looking for a motion.
Mayor, I motion for staff recommendations on attachment one.
Okay, I'll second that. We'll call for the vote. Passes five-zero. Moving on to public hearing number six, sixteen, Acting City Manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. This item is regarding the Public Health Goal Report. I've asked Assistant City Manager Mike Knight to provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Tree, Mayor, members of council. This is a time and place to conduct a public hearing to discuss the city's Public Health Goal Report. Senate Bill thirteen-oh-seven amended the California Health and Safety Code to require public water systems serving more than ten thousand service connections to prepare a Public Health Goal Report every three years if the constituents in the water system exceeds a Public Health Goal or maximum contaminant level goal thresholds. The Public Health Goal, Goals are non-enforceable public health targets established by the California Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment. Part of the California Environmental Protection Agency, these goals are based solely on public health risks and do not take into account factors such as analytical detection limits, threat, sorry, treatment technology, or costs of treatment. Where is adopted a Public Health Goal for a specific constituent, water suppliers must use the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency's maximum contaminant level goal as a benchmark. The state law further requires the city hold a public hearing to accept and respond to public comment on the Public Health Goal Report. This process promotes transparency and informs the public of the city's drinking water quality, health-related benchmarks, and any differences between the regulatory standards and health-based goals. The city of Porterville's water system remains in full compliance with all applicable state and federal drinking water quality standards. The twenty-twenty-five Public Health Goal Report is attached for council and for public review. It is also intended to supplement in addition to our Consumer Conference Report, which will be mailed out as of July first, as a deadline for that. Attached is the twenty-twenty-three, and the update will be coming out by July first of twenty-twenty-five. Just to go into the constituents, referencing the Health Goal Report, for the sake of discussion and sharing the information, the following constituents was detected, and the city of Porterville's drinking water source at levels above the Public Health Goal or if no Public Health Goal above the maximum contaminant level goal. Californian bacteria for twenty-twenty-four, we collected an average of seventy-four samples a month, a total of eight hundred and eighty-eight samples taken for the year. We did have five samples that were present for bacteria, but no tests were present for E. coli. One of the constituents that the city does monitor quarterly is tetrachloreethylene, acronym PCE. The Public Health Goal for PCE is point zero-six parts per billion with a maximum contaminant level of five parts per billion. The detection level is within six wells. Again, the city monitors that quarterly. We have an annual running average of about two-point-five-seven parts per billion. The category of the health risk associated with PCE is that people who drink water containing PCE above the maximum contaminant goal throughout their lifetime could experience liver problems and may have an increased risk of, of cancer. California Department of Health Services says the drinking water which meets the maximum contaminant level goal is associated with little to no risk or none risk and should be considered safe with respect to PCE. The numerical health risk value for the Public Health Goal of point zero-six parts per billion is compared to one in one million. The numerical health risk for the maximum contaminant level goal is five parts per billion is eight in one hundred thousand. The city does conduct lead and copper sampling. The results are attached also in the, in the flyer. The city meets below standard on the ninetieth percentile with detection levels of point one-one parts per billion and no copper detected. The city of Porterville's water system is in full compliance of the federal and state lead and copper rule. The category of health risk for lead and copper is just gestational damage to kidneys, liver, and nervous system of humans. Numerical health risk, information on lead has not been provided. The state agency responsible for providing that information is the, scroll up, the California Department of Health. So on May sixth, twenty-twenty-four, the city began sampling the thirty-seven wells that composes our distribution system, and we test that for PFAS, so polyfluoralkyl. Of the thirty-seven wells tested, the city did have seven wells detect, none of which met the action level, but those, those wells were listed, City Well Seven, City Well Eighteen, Nineteen, Twenty, Twenty-One, Twenty-Two, Twenty-Six, and Lindell Seven. Active levels that are in service without PFAS treatment but are well under the responsive level. Research still suggests that exposure of certain PFAS chemicals may lead to adverse health effects. That's staff's report. Attachments are included, and this will be going out in our mailing with our Consumer Conference Report. For the public hearing, staff would ask that council conduct a public hearing to solicit any comments on the Public Health Goal.
Thank you for that staff report, Assistant City Manager Knight. Okay, we'll open the public hearing at seven-twenty-seven. Anyone like to come forward and give comments on this matter? I think he's going to need help coming up.
All right. Thank you, council, for this opportunity. I'd like to address the report and the availability that it would have on, online, because I, last time I researched on the Public Health Report, it was a two-thousand-and-thirteen research, or two-thousand-and-thirteen statistic that pointed that there were seven wells that were tested for nitrates. Can I get a little more information on the nitrate?
Yeah, we could ask that question. Is there any other comments? Okay. Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward at this time on this matter? I'm not seeing anyone. Is there anyone online?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing at, or, public comments at seven-twenty-nine. Bring it back to the council. Does council have any questions for staff? Well, I'll start it off. The question on the nitrate.
So we do test, so we have annual tests for nitrate, we have quarterly tests for nitrate, and in cases, we also do monthly tests for, for nitrate. The city does not exceed any of the maximum contaminant level goals for nitrate contamination. We're below half the MCL on all tests, so.
And, and the nitrate levels, they flex, they, they go up and down, right? Even though we've been going away from septic tanks, the, the nitrate still kind of?
So nitrate still exists. So we have had higher traces of, of nitrate in years of drought. So we did see a spike in some nitrate levels during the peak of the drought, at, the water's lowest. But since the recovery, we've seen those taper off, and we've not continued to have any other inclining results.
Thank you for that. And then, just because I'm going here, another thing I liked stating for the record is fluoride. You know, you hear a lot of rumors that fluoride is in the water in many cities, and the city of Porterville has been approached about putting fluoride in the city's water system, and we have never done that. But could you state that for the record as well?
Correct. We do not inject fluoride within the water system.
Awesome. For my colleagues, is there any questions for our Assistant City Manager?
Mr. Knight, I just have one question. Water in Porterville, is it safe to drink?
Absolutely.
That's all I have.
Just for clarity's sake, Director Knight, could you do a basic comparison, maybe with other cities? How do we do with our water? Are we above average?
Well, I have a little bit of a bias on the city's water. I, I would, I would say we, we do have really good quality drinking water in surrounding communities. We, we are one of the very few that do have traces of PFAS, so that there's ongoing communication on, on what that looks like in the future, blending techniques and those type of things. But other communities suffer from TCP one-two-three, so there's, there's other contaminants, constituents that, that do require heavy treatment, and the city does not experience any of those. We have no arsenic. We have, you know, none of the other struggles that other organizations deal with. I don't want to call out my colleagues, because if I could have the water even better, I, I would, but some of that is out of our control. But I would say, you know, on record, the city of Porterville goes to great extent to monitor and take care of the groundwater supply, not only for sustainability purposes and making sure that we recharge and, and have a future supply to draw from, but also to track any constituents from sampling purposes and staff's efforts to monitor that on a daily basis.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Mr. Knight. Any other questions?
No questions.
Councilman Beltran?
Just a brief comment. Yeah, I just, I want to thank staff. This is something, as a citizen, I was blind to the efforts that the city goes through. I remember sometime last year, on what some of the consent calendar was approval of like lab equipment, refrigeration stuff, so samples can be stored, and just that the operational system was sufficient for the, all the tasks that need to be done to make sure that we're meeting the, the health goals. Again, I was oblivious to all the efforts that, I used to be on a well, so it was just whatever the water was in there was what I got. But, yeah, there are quality of water. I just appreciate however many people listen to these videos or on YouTube or read the agenda, that, just to know that the extent that the effort that the city goes through to make sure the water quality of the community.
And I would just add, so this report the city provides every three years for a public hearing, and then every year, the city provides a Consumer Conference Report of the previous year's water supply. So we try to get that information out and provide that to our customers. And staff is available for any questions. Should a customer have, have one, they can call the office and speak to staff, and we explain anything that they might have a question on.
We appreciate that customer service, Assistant City Manager. With that, if council has no other comments, looking for a motion.
I'd just like to say one more comment. Thank you very much for the report. It was very detailed, and I remember living in the east side of Porterville. We also had a well water, and it was, you know, that's how we drank. So, but, and that was some good water back in the seventies and eighties. I'm sure now that I live over on the west side, that it's comparable to that. So I appreciate the report, and I, I'll take the staff recommend, the report.
A motion for staff recommendations.
Yes.
Okay. I'll second that. We'll call for the vote. Someone has to vote. Passes five-zero.
I, I appreciate council's engagement, but it was just to receive any, any comments on the report, but thank you very much.
Oh, right on. That was informational, huh?
That was great.
Okay, moving on. Okay, so moving on to public hearing number seventeen, Consideration of an Ordinance Designating Fire Hazards Severity Zones in the Local Responsibility Area. Acting City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I've asked Chief Cogburn to provide the staff report, or pass the football.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Tree. I've asked Fire Marshal Dignam to present tonight's information.
This is how delegation works, huh?
It is. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of council, city manager, staff, citizens. To comply with the state wildfire hazard mapping requirements, the city must consider adoption of an ordinance establishing fire hazard severity zones within the local responsibility area. This staff report outlines the legal background, review process, and public notification steps taken, and recommends setting a public hearing to proceed with adoption. Under Government Code Section five-one-one-seven-eight, the California State Fire Marshal is required to identify and classify areas throughout the state as moderate, high, or very high fire hazard severity zones. These classifications are based on consistent statewide criteria, including fuel loading, slope, fire behavior, weather, and wind patterns that contribute to wildfire spread. The updated mapping process incorporates new scientific data, local climate conditions, and fire behavior models to more accurately reflect wildfire hazards. The term hazard and risk are distinct and defined as follows. Hazard reflects the physical conditions that create the potential for wildfire evaluated over a thirty-to-fifty-year period and excluding mitigation efforts. Risk accounts for the potential damage under current conditions, including existing mitigations such as fire-resistant construction and fuel reduction. Fire hazard severity zones are designed in, are designated in two primary responsibility areas. The state responsibility areas, where the state is responsible for wildfire protection, and a local responsibility area, which include incorporated cities, urban areas, agricultural lands, and desert regions where wildfire protection falls under local jurisdiction. Originally, Assembly Bill three-thirty-seven, the Bates Bill, required only very high fire hazard severity zone designations in the local response areas. However, Senate Bill sixty-three in twenty-twenty-one amended the law to require moderate and high-zone classifications as well. The updated SRA maps took effect on April first, twenty-twenty-four, and CalFire's update of the LRA maps, or the local response area maps, followed. Although draft maps were expected in January of twenty-twenty-five, the city received them on March tenth, twenty-twenty-five. Upon review, staff identified approximately a hundred and seventeen parcels in the city's LRA that were fully or partially designated as moderate. Per Government Code Section five-one-one-seven-nine, the city council -- Per Government Code Section five-one-one-seven-nine, the city council must adopt moderate, high, and very high zones by ordinance within a hundred and twenty days of receiving the state fire marshal's recommendations. In addition, Section five-one-one-seven-eight-point-five requires that maps be made available for public review within thirty days. In response to receiving the maps, the city posted the maps online. We mailed notices to the affected property owners and shared the information via the fire department's social media accounts. The public review period ran from April fourth through May fourth, two thousand twenty-five. No comments were received through the online portal or in person at City Hall. The city is not authorized to reduce or remove designated hazard zones. However, it may increase the designation or include additional areas not identified by the state, provided such changes are supported by findings and substantial evidence under Government Code Section five-one-one-eight-two. Following review by the fire chief, the staff does not recommend any changes to the state's designations at this time. A model ordinance developed by CalFire is included as an attachment. The city may also seek support from CalFire's land use planning program, which offers guidance on fire-safe building standards, development regulations, and general safety, general plan safety elements. Insurance providers use separate risk models from those used by CalFire, and while some data may overlap, insurers rely on proprietary models that consider additional dynamic variables. Staff will continue monitoring for future updates to the maps and initiate the appropriate review and council processes as required. The recommendations are that the city council hold the noticed public hearing and receive any public testimony concerning the proposed ordinance, receive and review the fire hazard severity zone maps and data received from the state fire marshal in March, two thousand twenty-five, acknowledge that the received information was made available for public review and comment within thirty days of receipt. The website was open to the public, notices were mailed to affected property owners, and the fire department pushed the information out via social media platforms. The public comment period was open for thirty days from April fourth through May fourth, two thousand twenty-five, in accordance with Government Code Section five-one-one-seven-eight-point-five. And finally, approve the draft ordinance designating only moderate fire hazard severity zones within the city's local responsibility area, waive the first reading, and order the ordinance to print. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you for that, Fire Marshal Dignam. Okay, at the, this time, we'll open the public, uh, hearing at seven forty. Does anyone have any comments? Please come forward at this time.
Hello, uh, once again, thanks for this opportunity. Um, I'd like to also, um, recount a, another two thousand thirteen report on the fire hazard incidents. And I was wondering, uh, because due to the report that I've read, we, it was, uh, I believe like forty out of a hundred? I don't remember what scale they used to determine how prone, uh, Porterville is to fires. But I wanna ask, is currently this year, two thousand twenty-five, is, is Porterville at all prone to any, uh, fires?
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez. Is there anyone else? I'm not seeing anyone. Is there anyone online?
No, your honor.
Okay, we'll close, uh, the public hearing at seven forty-one and bring it back to the council. Does, uh, council have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, Mr. D, uh, from last year's report, or the last report to this report, is there any difference or severity as, as to fires alongside that, from that report of the map?
This was, uh, something that was designated by the state fire marshal's office. So we were not involved in that process. Uh, essentially, this, the state had already designated very high severity zones, and then the state was responsible for identifying areas that were moderate or high, and then notifying those jurisdictions. And so we were notified that we had some properties, approximately a hundred and seventeen, that were designated as moderate. They're not high, they're not very high. They primarily fall along the eastern side and a little bit, uh, southern, kinda down by the college, some of that large open area. Uh, does fall within that moderate range, but it's not in the high or very high severity zone.
Okay, and everything's prone to fire?
Uh, everything is prone to fire. We do have a pretty robust weed abatement program. Um, I've been managing that for eighteen years. Uh, code enforcement staff are out diligently, daily right now, trying to get that stuff resolved.
I just, I just needed some clarity on, on that, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Is there any other questions, uh, for the fire marshal?
Yeah, I got one. Just, just clarification, get on the record, uh, this is a new map and a new approach, and it was done in, uh, a drought period, but this, we have always treated those same parcels the same way in our city, have we not?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So there's, there's no increase. It's the same as we've always treated it, it's just now codified in a map.
Correct, and it's designated by the state, not by us. We have the ability, if we wanted to, to raise those or increase those severities. However, we've chosen not to through the fire chief, you know, reviewing all of this with us and going out. And it's likely the reason we have a robust weed abatement program, that we don't need to, to increase that.
It's just common sense, right? Just common sense.
And if I could, Vice Mayor, yeah, the, the answer to the question is, we have been, we identified these areas before the state of California did through our weed abatement program. So the priority is in these areas and always has been, um, and now it's just identified in a map in the state of California.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Okay, bringing it back to council, uh, how would you like to go forward? I'm looking for a motion.
I make a motion, go forward, staff recommendations.
I, I second.
We have a first and a second. Let's call for the vote. Passes five-zero. Okay, moving on.
Would you like to read by title only?
Yes.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Porterville to designate fire hazard severity zones.
That was it? All right.
Very much.
Yeah, a lot longer. Okay, uh, moving on to public hearing number eighteen, adoption of provisional interim budget for the first quarter of fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, acting city manager.
Thank you, mayor. At its meeting on May twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, the city council approved an alternative schedule for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six budget calendar. This revised approach allows for the continuation of the current fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five budget through the first quarter of the new fiscal year, covering the period from July, uh, through September, two thousand twenty-five. In accordance with Section fifty-one of the city charter, the city manager is required to submit revenue and expenditure estimates for the upcoming fiscal year, no later than thirty days before the end of the current fiscal year. While the charter requires adoption of a general budget, it does not require that the budget cover the full fiscal year. This flexibility has been exercised during the previous emergencies, including, uh, in two thousand twenty and again in two thousand twenty-three. In both instances, the city adopted a provisional budget to ensure continued operation while a final budget was developed. Um, a final fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six budget will be presented to the city council following a series of study sessions and opportunities for the public engagement. Adoption of the final budget is scheduled for September, two thousand twenty-five or earlier. It is recommended that the city council, uh, one, conduct a public hearing to consider the adoption of a provisional interim city budget for the period of July one, two thousand twenty-five through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, and two, adopt the attached draft resolution approving the continuance of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five budget through the first quarter of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six. Uh, we did provide a previous, uh, staff reports on this item as well for, uh, city council's, uh, information and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, acting city manager, bringing it, oh, we gotta open a public hearing, right? So we'll open the public hearing at seven forty-six. If anyone has any comments, please come forward at this time. I'm not seeing anyone. Is there anyone online, Fernando?
No, your honor.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing at seven forty-seven. Bring it back to council. Does council have any questions? Vice Mayor?
Um, no, I just, I just have a comment. Um, I know that early on this year, the, with the former interim city manager, that I asked for a financial review so I could understand the budget better. I was told that, that we're in great financial shape in our city. And when we got that financial review, it was just an overview. So I think it's important as, uh, the last city manager, interim city manager departed, that we have some time to look at this in detail. We're having a meeting next week so that we can identify any structural problems that we have with the budget. In my experience, the main concern, and we were all concerned about government spending, but we have to put it in perspective, but the main concern is, do we have line items that are gonna cause us to have a structural deficit? And I use the example before with recycling. We stopped recycling nearly ten years ago, but we're still mandated to recycle. And that went from a five-hundred-thousand-dollar kiss in our budget, which is a benefit to our budget, to a five-hundred-thousand-dollar expense. So that's running more than I would estimate, just in higher math, six to eight million dollars in losses to the city. That's a structural issue. So I wanna identify structural issues in our budget to make sure that as we go forward in the next year, that if there any, if there are any other structural issues, we not only identify them, but we work to resolve them. And there's always one that comes up, and this is gonna come up again, and that is the golf course. The golf course, we spend three-hundred-thousand dollars a year on. But in the business, you'd call that a lost leader, because that's something you do as part of business. Because in our city, the golf course is an important part of our community. But how are we paying for that, and is that a structural problem? We need to discuss that. And we need to discuss other things that are in the budget that are not still, still unclear to me. So putting this off until we have a chance to look at that properly and, and establishing a good budget, we have to determine if we're going to be on a sound footing as we go into the next fiscal year. And considering that the previous city manager, interim city manager, uh, has departed, I think we need some time to look this over and make sure that it's, um, copasthetic, and that it's on track, and that we're, it's in, in a reasonable amount for the public so that we can have some transparency on this and understand what those structural problems may be and address them to the extent that we can as we go into the next fiscal year.
Uh, well-stated, Vice Mayor, and just to add to that, another structural issue is like the armory, where we're spending three-hundred-thousand dollars annually, uh, to house, uh, people that are experiencing homelessness. And, uh, it, it is part of that impact and what, what's going forward for the future. And through our study session, we'll, we'll all together get to evaluate, uh, the budget. And, uh, one thing I'd like to state on record is for this study session coming up, I would like to see it in advance. The prior study session, we got it the day of. I'd like to see it, uh, you know, four to five days in advance. Uh, and so I'm hoping that, that we get that for that study session. And then, once we get through the study session, we can figure out the budget together, and we'll all be informed on what the budget really looks like. Okay, if there's, uh, no other comments, uh, Councilman Rivas?
Yeah, I ha- I have a comment. I mean, when, when I first started this, uh, we asked for this budget. Uh, I remember Mr. Councilman McCravie asking for the former, um, city manager and, uh, for the budget outline, and also a few other constituents. But, you know, for whatever reason, they, they said it very nicely. Uh, if we had known, and we got that information ahead of time, we're going into, I'm going into my sixth month in this. That's why we need that transparency. That transparency says a lot. So this study session that the mayor is talking about, we, we will, uh, look at the budget of where we stand. And, uh, but if, I think when, the main thing what I'm ask, uh, trying to get my point is, if we have had that months ago, before we're up here today, we would be in a better situation of what we can do with, with the budget. So with that, I, I, I just wanna express that comment. Uh, we're not trying to hide anything, uh, but it does fall on the, the, uh, somebody's lap on this. And, uh, uh, you know, we make the decisions up here, hard decisions, but we needed to know where that budget was at when we asked for it from the beginning, so, and we didn't get it, so. But, and, and, and all effort, uh, we're doing our best, and, uh, we'll, the, we'll, we'll hash it out, and we'll, we'll get it, we'll get it worked out, and, and I think everything will be o- okay in the end. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, if there's no other comments, I'm looking for a motion.
I make a motion, then we go with the staff recommendations on this item.
I second.
Okay, we'll call for the vote. Passes five-zero. Okay, moving on to scheduled matters, number nineteen, acting city manager.
Thank you, your honorable mayor, Vice Mayor, city council, uh, city manager, and, uh, development director, Jeff O'Neil, city planner. Uh, the city has certain obligations as a lead agency under the California Environmental Quality Act, uh, among which are to, uh, present information about projects to the public, uh, and then to do its best to mitigate, uh, reduce or eliminate potential environmental effects that could happen from those projects. Uh, to that end, uh, SEQA itself, the statute adopted by the legislature and signed by the governor, uh, provides a couple of different methods by which the city can produce these analyses. It essentially says, uh, that the city shall, uh, prepare or contract for the preparation of documents. However, the SEQA guidelines, which are developed by the Office of, hm, used to be called the Office of Planning and Research, and now it is the, uh, Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation, uh, develops guidelines for SEQA, and those are adopted by the Secretary of the Resources Agency of the State, uh, that are held to help implement the actual statute, which is generally more complicated. It, the guidelines provide different alternatives which can allow, can involve, uh, the project proponent, uh, providing SEQA documents itself, uh, the proponent contracting with another party to prepare SEQA documents, uh, and a few different other options. Back in two thousand thirteen, the city adopted, uh, ordinance ten-eighty-one, which codified the city's preferred policy for the preparation of SEQA documents. Um, it essentially requires that the city, uh, maintains a list of, uh, approved consultants. And when a private development project is brought in, the, uh, city solicits via task order process, um, proposals from those consultants on that list. And then the developer, without seeing the names of the consultant, uh, based on the scope of work and the price, is allowed to choose. Then that consultant contracts directly with the city to provide the necessary services. Uh, we currently have a, uh, request from a developer in town to modify the city's procurement process. Uh, as mentioned by Mr. Woodard, uh, he spoke earlier in the meeting, uh, there are several methods that are proposed within the staff report here. Uh, different alternatives that the council can choose from amongst, or modify, as Mr. Woodard, uh, suggested. Uh, so essentially, staff is just requesting direction from the council as to how you would like to proceed with this. If you would like, I can go through and summary the different, uh, processes. Uh, they are contained in the staff report.
Yes, please do, just for the record.
Uh, so as mentioned, we do have the, the current practice. Um, we could also allow contracts to contract directly with consultants chosen from a list maintained by the city. The, as Mr. Woodard mentioned, um, there could be a modification to that also, which, under which the city provide or maintains this list, but other SEQA consultants could be proposed by a development proponent, and once vetted by the city, could be allowed to prepare the documents. Uh, we could simply allow applicants to contract with any consultant of their choice. In this case, the city would not have any say in who is contracted, uh, which might result in some, uh, problematic, uh, situation on the, the front end of the document, keeping in mind that ultimately, it's entirely the city's document at the end of the, uh, at the end of the day. Uh, and so we can require, uh, any revisions, et cetera, regardless of how the document is actually prepared. Uh, we could allow applicants to select consultants of their choice, but still require that contract to be with the city. Uh, or we could prepare documents internally using city staff, uh, with consultants assisting as needed. So those are the, the five alternatives that are mentioned within the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil.
Certainly.
Okay, bringing it back to council, uh, you know, we, I'm gonna go ahead and do it. The first lady of Visalia is in the audience. I talked to the mayor of Visalia, um, earlier today and just wanted to pick his brain on how they do business in Visalia. And so, uh, Dol- Dolores Taylor, uh, and she is with, uh, Tularean Kings County Builders Association as well. And so would you just come up and, and talk about some of these issues and what, what's going on with developers? And give us your opinion on it.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank, thank you for the introduction. I am Dolores Taylor, and I'm actually here as the CEO of the Builders Industry Association of Tularean Kings County. I was recently appointed, um, I've been doing this for about six months, so, but I'm excited. This item really falls under our, um, zone, our territory, so I wanted to speak in behalf of our builders.
with developers, and give us your opinion on it?
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you for the introduction. I am Dolores Taylor, and I'm actually here as the CEO of the Builders Industry Association of Tulare and Kings County. I was recently appointed, I've been doing this for about six months, but I'm excited. This item really falls under our zone, our territory, so I wanted to speak in behalf of our builders. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am here, more than anything, to ask the city of Porterville to consider allowing developers to select qualified consultants to complete environmental documents, as long as they meet the city standards. Right now, limiting this work to just a few firms can cause delays and drive up costs. When cities give more vetted professionals a chance to contribute, projects move faster and more efficiently. That means that homes, businesses, and public infrastructure can be delivered on schedule, which benefits the entire community. It also encourages competition, helping to reduce the overall cost of environmental studies for both the city and the private builders. This approach is already proven successful in other parts of California, for example, the city of Visalia. It offers a balanced path forward, protecting the environment while advancing smart, timely development. I also want to let you know that I submitted an email, a letter, with an attachment. I don't know, I submitted later, I don't know if it was delivered to the council members, but I have copies here, if you want to hand out. This one goes in a little more detail of what I was speaking tonight. I wasn't sure how much time I would have to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, and I'll bring it back to council. Is there any questions? Councilman Rivas? Vice Mayor McCurvy?
No, it's great to get some input from local business organization and some recommendations. Thank you very much for coming in and taking the time. You know, I have a couple of comments. I don't want to take away from the good presentation that Jim or others have made, Dolores has made, but, you know, we just saw this, just to illustrate a point, right? So we had this major disaster down in Palisades. And there's 65,000 requests for permits, and they've got, what, 100 so far? The governor even waived the SEQA environments, and we're still not getting it done. I mean, this is not just a Porterville issue, this is a state issue. I understand the environment's important. Now, this organization that does the SEQA is now called climate change, and I'm hearing that the cap and trade bill that they're doing up in Sacramento is actually going to take away some of our transportation funds. So there's a lot of really politicized words and organizations around this. But, look, the point I make here is, the SEQA had become a barrier and a burden for a lot of people, and it's driving up the cost of housing everywhere, and it's extending the expenses for all the people that build houses everywhere. And so I think it's important that we just keep it in the common sense perspective and say, you know what? If we got a builder, and there's a chance that they can improve the process, and they can go from a recommended list from us, an either-or, and do it on their own, but they still follow the same regulatory pattern, and it doesn't drive expense and maybe speed up the process, I am all for that. And I think I would make a recommendation that, and it would just summarize tonight, that we have a list of providers that we recommend, or you could go out on your own, as long as they're qualified. And I think that we may need to just update our policy and our ordinance to enable that. And not in preference to any one builder, but just in general, because looking at the regulatory environment, and we heard this evening how tough it was just to get a business license, we have overburdened the people that make things work, and we need to make it easier for them. And that's my recommendation, Mayor.
And before I take it to the next council, just legal advice, this is an ordinance, so would we have to go through the process, a public hearing, to change this ordinance?
So there's a couple, well, if we're going to amend the ordinance, yes. So we could, there's a couple of different ways that we can approach this. So we don't have to change the ordinance, you could rescind the ordinance, and we could revert to a policy-type situation, which would make it a little bit easier to change in the future, too, or tweak if we need to.
I like that, yeah.
And so I think that that will also simplify it greatly. So it will also save time, so that we're not having to go through a first and second reading for any changes on this ordinance before it's effective. So there's, I think that's probably, that would be my recommended approach with something like this anyways.
Well, and with a policy, making it a policy change, then if things aren't working, it's easier to correct to get to where we want to be.
Because there's another aspect, too, which I think we probably should mention that the council will want to consider, is the other thing that we've sought, we've seen when we've been looking at this, is that there's often ground rules as far as communication, so that we protect the integrity of the evaluation process. So, like, little things like that, like, we may want to look at how you want to do it, and then if it's not working well, we can make changes, and it would just be easier than to have it in a policy rather than via ordinance.
Yeah, and I'd just state for the record, too, because this is a path I do want to go down, but for developer, if you're thinking that you're going to hire an environmental consultant and be able to cut corners, it's not going to work. We're still going to hold you to the same standards that the development ordinance is at. And so, but, if it does open an opportunity to speed up the process, this could be a good thing, a great thing for our community. Councilman Beltran, you have any comments?
I think, just my notes, I think they were all touched on the list of recommended consultants. If they're not on that list of recommendations, that there is a verification process to make sure that the work that is done is up to par. And then, the ultimate backstop is that the city has the final review and approval. Other than that, I mean, that's just some of the just language that's in there. I think those were all touched on. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Beltran. Councilman Green?
No questions and no comments.
Okay, I think Vice Mayor made a motion. I don't know if that's what your intent was, but I liked the direction you gave.
Well, I would have to be an amended motion, because Julia did the rescinding part.
So would you like to make a motion to direct step, to bring an item to rescind the ordinance?
Yes.
And then also simultaneously bring the policy? And we'll do what we need to do. It's been a while since we've rescinded an ordinance. It may take two readings, but that doesn't have to hold up the policy that we're doing.
I like that. So the motion is staff recommendation?
With, yes, with the staff addendum.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Is there any other comments? We'll call for the vote. Passes 5-0. Okay, moving on to Schedule Matter number 20, Acting City Manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the final scheduled matter on tonight's agenda, and on page, we're on page 976, thanks to the last scheduled matter item. This item is titled "Initiation of Comprehensive Review and Modernization of Article 305: Signs of the Porterville Development Ordinance." Article 305: Signs of the Porterville Development Ordinance establishes zoning-based regulations for freestanding signs, wall signs, projected signs, temporary signs, and other advertising displays. While these standards have supported local land use goals and contributed to the visual consistency of the environment, Article 305 may no longer reflect the needs of the business community or the priorities of the city council. As part of the city's broader effort to modernize the development ordinance, staff has been working with a consultant to review and update various land use regulations, including signage. The city council has met with the consultant to provide policy direction, emphasizing the importance of balancing regulatory flexibility with safety, aesthetics, and consistency with federal, state, and local standards. In response to the council's expressed interest in reducing regulatory burdens and increasing flexibility, staff is recommending an expedited review and update of Article 305 in advance of the broader development ordinance revisions. This effort reflects a shared desire between staff and the city council to support local businesses, simplifying permitting and eliminating outdated or duplicative provisions. A staff-led working group will be formed to evaluate Article 305 and prepare proposed revisions. Areas of focus will include streamlining the permitting process, expanding flexibility, modernizing enforcement tools, and ensuring legal compliance. Staff will return to the city council. We did state 30 days, and then in the recommendations, we said 60 days. I think we can come back to you in 30 days, and so I will amend our staff's recommendation to this. One is to direct staff to initiate an expedited review and modernization of Article 305: Signs of the Porterville Development Ordinance. And two, establish a staff-led working group to evaluate and recommend changes based on council's direction, prior consultant input, and stakeholder feedback. And three, this is where I'll amend it, direct staff to return within 30 days with proposed revisions, and an implementation schedule for council's consideration. That's the conclusion of the staff report, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Acting City Manager. Tree, bringing it back to council, Councilman Rivas, you have any questions?
Yes, thank you for the reports, Mr. Tree. On this sign issue, I think we need to really look at it and work with the business owners, because as it stands, you go out there in town, and not every sign is up to par. So with that, you know, when I campaigned, I campaigned to eliminate a lot of red tape, and this is one of the ones that I want to eliminate. I want to go back, and I do want you guys to work with the business owners, and work something out to where, you know, it doesn't need to be on a roofline aspect, as long as it's secure, and it's not no big billboard on it, that it's going to fall on somebody and hurt anybody through inclement weather, or God, earthquake, or that matter. If it's secure properly with an anchor, a diamond-shaped anchor, that would be great. And there are some things on this ordinance that needs to be addressed promptly, because, you know, I'm out for business. Business owners need a little bit of latitude, and, you know, we as a city need to recognize that we work for our constituents, they don't work for us. So with, you know, I just don't understand why it's so hard to get things done here in Porterville as a business owner. Needs to get things done, just to make Porterville the way it should be, you know? And with that, you know, work with these people, and you need to open up and have opportunities to make Porterville grow. I don't appreciate them coming and calling me and telling me some mediocre stuff that could be handled right over a telephone call. I mean, it's so common sense to take care of business. I mean, as long as we're not breaking the rules, I think we need some type of ground rules, or groundwork, to where we can work and get these issues resolved. So with that, I have some other comments later, but right now, that's what I have. I'm going to let my other council members take the helm.
It sounds like you didn't have much of an opinion on it. Councilman Beltran?
I know people see government as the bad guy, but there's a reason why there's rules. It's, you know, I guess from a policy standpoint, it's probably number one, safety, you know, making sure there's ADA compliance, or something that can fall or damage, you know, adjacent property or a person. Next is probably something that's distracting while somebody's driving or what have you. And I know this, it was funny, as I was looking through the sign ordinance, I'm like, gosh, this is a lot of little things, but then there was examples of why something is in here. Somebody complained, there was an issue, that's why it's in here. A majority don't fall under this category, but it's there for a reason. I know a lot of this has to do with Main Street, although there are adjacent properties throughout the community, whether it's commercial, it has to really do with commercial, that there's a lot of banners, a lot of things that are near the sidewalks, that might obscure entry and exit ways of driveways. But I think a big part of this is just the aesthetic. A lot of people want, they have this idea of what downtown Main Street in Visalia looks like, and it's all an aesthetic. But that comes with a bunch of rules and regulations. There's things that they allow and they don't allow. And so this is one of those really fine lines of, hey, government, get off my back, let me run the business I want. And then you have other group of people saying, man, that does not look good, might not be a color, or, you know, the color theme or the font that an adjacent property owner will be like, gosh, that's, I want to move my business, because that's just, it's too much going on. This is a fine line of government policy, where people have their property rights to do what they want, and how they want to run their business, what logos they want to use, what fonts, how big their banners are. And there's also the curb appeal of what does this convey to the community for those that are visiting downtown or any kind of shopping centers. I don't know specifically, Mr. Whitman, if there was a particular item that you had brought up. Until I hear or see something, I know there's, we have a lot of common sense we want to approach, but what might be common sense to one person may not be to another. And I think that's the fine line we walk up here as we change any of these policies. So I look forward to seeing recommendations. I don't have any as I went through here. I figured there's a reason why a lot of these are in here, because of something I haven't came across, but didn't mean it didn't happen 10 or 15 years ago. But if there's something that might be burdensome, I haven't heard that part yet, but if there's something that is, I look forward to possibly changing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Beltran. Councilman Green?
Yeah, I just have a comment or two. It's just going to take a moment, but I think this is a great opportunity for the council and the staff to hopefully streamline some of the code, sign codes, because that's probably next two roads, that's one of the biggest complaints I've heard as a city councilman, is signage. And problems can't be above the roofline, and this, and can't be hanging here, and can't be over there, and it seems, and the biggest complaint has been, I think, enforcement, selective enforcement. I've heard a lot of that. So I think this will be a great opportunity for us all to hopefully rectify some of the problems. We're not going to be perfect, we're not going to get them all, we're not going to make everybody happy, but we'll try. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Green. Vice Mayor McCurvy?
No, I think those are great comments by Councilman Beltran about how we would treat Main Street as a different zone, for the aesthetics and all those things. Do we need to have that same applied everywhere, or no? And so we got to be very specific about those zones. But, you know, I think I would echo Stan's, Councilman Green's, comments about selective enforcement, I hear this a lot. And so I'm still, you know, pushing for this idea that we have to get rid of all the anonymous reporting in our city. If you're going to make a complaint about something, you need to put your name on it when you make that complaint, so that we can reduce some of this anonymous and selective enforcement. And if we're not consistent, if we're not out there being consistent with everybody, what I hear the most of, and I think we're not consistent, is that some people are treated differently because of the selective enforcement, and they feel like it's unfair, and there's a level of frustration with that, and it is a burden. I mean, on the small business, it's a burden. Let's relieve that burden. Let's find some ways we can simplify this process. I think it's a great item, and we're going to do a team-based approach here, and just take out some of the bigger issues. Maybe we can figure out, you know, the 80/20 rule, right? 20% of the issues are causing 80% of the problems, and let's figure out what those 20 things are. So I really like this item, I think it's common sense, it goes for everybody, we just have to clarify, you know, because that aesthetic downtown, we need to keep it, because we want to really focus on downtown as a destination, as we work to, you know, develop the city. But in the vast majority of the city, we don't need to be that strict and that stringent. So that's my comments.
I love it, discretion's where we're wanting to go. And then I also like the recommendation of a staff-led working group, and the recommendations there. One thing I'd add to it, can you have this tiger team that you're going to put together, reach out to Mr. Whitman, and have conversations with him? And Mr. Whitman, if you'd leave your information with staff, that would make it helpful. With that, I'm going to go into some of the things that I see that just stick out to me, and just make some comments, so that you guys have some kind of direction on where I'm seeing things, where I go, is that overburdensome? Or why? And Fire Marshal Digman, if you could help, if you'd come up to the podium and just, as we talk, because you are the expert in town, I think, on this issue, and probably the most knowledgeable guy. One that I had trouble finding with, I had a business owner reach out to me a couple of years ago about windows. He used advertisement in his front window, and he covered up a percentage of his window. Where is that in this ordinance?
So that would be in the development standards, which is better for community development to answer, but I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, the window coverage is 50%?
Yes, and so that's one thing where I, so, let me take the environmental approach at this. If they covered up 100% of their window and blocking out the sunlight, then they'd use less energy on their air conditioner, ultimately. ultimately saving the planet. Thank you for the laugh, Vice Mayor. So my point being is, do we need to be that stringent on a business owner if they're wanting to do something in their front window for advertisement?
And I think just the 50% rule, sometimes, like for example liquor stores, would the police department want 100% of the windows covered if there's an incident going on inside?
That's a great point. That's a good conversation.
If there is some other type of business where they're prone to being robbed, in the case of the things that we heard today, are we as a community wanting to say, yeah, they can have that, and then we have no tactical advantage, or we don't know what the situation looks like inside? And I would defer to them as the experts. However, there's other ways to look at some of the reasons these rules are in place.
And that's a good point. That's why I asked you to come up here, because that's something that I did not see, right? But I think to myself, what's the difference between entering a business or a school with an active shooter? You're going in blind in certain arenas. Now, I would agree that the crime rate for robbery is probably a little higher in a liquor store, so I know what you're...
And I think these are broad rules applied to, with a broad brush.
Yeah. Okay, that was just one, the window talk. But also in the purpose, number C, or letter C, prevent the installation and maintenance of signs or advertising structures that individually or correctly have an injurious effect on the morals, moral of the people and the economic well-being of the city. What does that portray to you?
If you read that to me, I would say, for example, a gentleman's club. If they put up a sign that might be injurious to the moral fabric of the community.
Got you. Don't we, we have an ordinance against...
Well, yeah, yes, but we also, those are difficult to enforce, quite frankly. That particular clause is, I mean, that's what I usually am looking at the sign code for. Our, my general advice on sign regulations is you don't regulate based on content. Because that's, that becomes a constitutional issue.
Okay.
So, but, so that's a, that's a very long-winded way of trying to get around that. And I don't know if it's all that successful, but I think Clayton's exactly right. It's those type, okay, so let's not use, I think that particular business might be, you're right, we have ordinances, but we may not have one with regard to an adult novelty shop.
Correct.
Yes.
And so that, you know, so things like that is probably what it's aimed at.
And so I, trying to understand, going back to 2020, the Trump sign, that, I think that was like the biggest issue where we had a Trump sign.
You're talking to the right person about that.
Yes, and unfortunately you were attacked on this, and I'm sorry that that's the way it was portrayed, but you don't make the rules, you only enforce them.
Correct. And again, that was not because of the content of the sign. That was the size, the structure. We had 12-foot letters that didn't have any engineering and posed a danger to the community, potentially.
And how so was it a danger?
Well, I mean, you take something that size made out of plywood, and we get wind going up a hill or down a hill, and that thing comes down onto the road or goes up into the air and starts twirling and comes down, as we've seen, absolutely could have been an issue.
Okay.
There's, so, yeah, again, there's a lot of things that could have happened. And so essentially, the conversation that I had with that individual was, if you want to go through the process to get permits to do this, I have no issue with that. I don't know if the city will approve them, but there's a process to go through to find out. You don't just come up and say, I'm just going to do this.
On my property.
On my property in an unsafe manner.
Yeah, I, Little Booby has a hard time just because of the location of it being unsafe. I mean, there's...
Again, it's, there's a lot of things to consider. And so it's just one of those things where, again, I'm not saying no as an absolute. I'm saying no, not this way.
Yeah. And so I'm just stating some stuff for the record for staff to kind of know where my mind is and where I'm wanting to go. Another one is on the design principles, A, B, and C. I don't necessarily agree with, at the approach on that. And I'd like to see change in that field as well. And it's interesting with the signs, you know, what is on the sign? We go down to, for Turner locksmith, you can only have certain words where if someone wants to put their phone number on there in some other language, they're not allowed to. And so I, that's something else that I think we should look at and consider maybe giving a little more liberty to our business owners on what kind of signage they put out.
And primarily, my involvement is usually after someone has been identified, they've been noticed by the city, and they've failed to comply with the city, so we become kind of the enforcement arm. The only ones we really take the lead on or we summarily abate, for example, would be yard sale signs that get left up. They're trashy, they're not supposed to be attached to the poles, poles or signs. Anything that may be obstructing the right of way, for example, blocking a sidewalk so that people have access. And alternatively, anything that's placed in the median, for example, on Oliver Henderson, as it can be a distraction or a traffic distraction.
Fire Marshal Dignam, I apologize if I come in office, if I'm trying to pick on you.
No, it's not.
Or, and in fact, you do an outstanding job. You are involved in our community very deeply. And we just heard public comments about how great of an employee you are for this city and going out of your way and above and beyond to deliver and customer service. And so thank you for that. I apologize if that's when I called you up. That's not my intent.
I understand we're up here for context, and I don't take anything from it. I like to consider myself an asset and not an obstacle.
You absolutely are an asset. And then the last one that kind of was jumping out to me was, well, excuse me, it's not the last one, you know. So in section E for equipment signs is flags, flags with the display of only non-commercial speech. So I've seen certain flags, and it goes into like moving flags as well, right? And so stuff we want to talk about, see about a different direction, prohibited signs. I would just, I'm just going to, I'm not going to go through each one for the sake of the time, but I'm thinking A, B, D, E, J, L, and N, I'd like to see some changes in. Do you need me to repeat that, or, I apologize, I went a little faster. With that, that's, I understand the safety concerns. I understand having some regulations. We don't want nudity or profanity. There are certain things that we want to try to protect our citizens from, and we want a safe environment for our community. But we also want to deliver on cutting regulation, and this is just a simple win to deliver that. Thank you, Fire Marshal. I'm calling you chief already. Okay, with that, I guess I'd make the motion to go forward with the tiger team and with some of that direction. Are there any other comments from my colleagues?
No, Your Honor.
Yeah, I just wanted to make one comment. I wasn't trying to ambiguate something about Main Street or anything of that nature, trying to change the moral view of it. It's just, some of these signs could be allowed. I've seen them firsthand on Villa and Olive, and as long as it was, to me, he needs, those businesses need to advertise their business. And the billboards, the boards that they have on their roof line, to me, they're equitable. They could be, need a little bit more restraint or security in the event of a weather, inclement weather. But in that, I just don't want you guys to get the impression that I was trying to change the focal point of deregulating a lot of these things that the mayor mentioned, Mr. Beltran mentioned, and Mr. McCurvy, and Mr. Stan. So I'm all for changes, and I do recommend the changes that Mr. the mayor recommended.
Yeah, and I, just so you know, one of the sections I highlighted was for an attachment like on the roof or signage, not just having it on the front of the building. So it's something that staff will look at with the tiger team that's going to be developed. Is there any other comments?
No comments.
Do you have a comment there? Okay, there's a motion on the table?
I second it.
Okay, we'll call for the vote. Passes 5-0. Okay, moving on to 1234 reports. This is a time for all AB 1234 reports required pursuant to government code. Okay, the LINK Committee, Councilman Beltran. LINK Committee met on June 4th across the road there. There was a brief welcome and introduction by Chair Denise Marchand, went around room, gave introductions. The minutes were approved from the May 7th meeting. There were no budget changes. The carryover balance is $8,940.06. These are the funds that help, will help with the upcoming drive-through dinner, which is LINK's largest fundraising event with proceeds that go towards the winter coat giveaway and point-in-time survey that's done every January, goes towards those incentives for ongoing services at the Porterville Navigation Center. Next was an update from the Porterville Navigation Center. Right now, their total of unduplicated individuals that have sought services there, 2,556 individuals. Right now, there is a lull in their residence there. There are 13 in the emergency shelter and seven in the bridge. That is due to an ongoing health issue there, so they're limiting the individuals that are being received until that health situation is mitigated. There was a really great report coming from KU's administrator who was in attendance. There will be a new program. It's called Field-Based Services. And this is where mental health clinicians, consisting of nurse, a peer support, and a psychologist, that will be, this is not necessarily open to the public. It's open to individuals who are residents there of the shelter, and I believe also a Finka Serena, if I remember my notes right. So this is a really, really big step in getting mental health. There's been some Adventist has, had had, I'm sorry, Anthem, had had a mental health service that was, I wouldn't say hit and miss, it was just, you had to have an iPad, there had to be a clinician available. That was sometime last year. So this is a great one for the Porterville Navigation Center. There will be, and there will be representatives that will be coming to our next meeting to give us a little better rundown of that service. The next item was the drive-through dinner, which is planned for September 25th. That will, that meal used to be cheerly veta. We're transitioning to spaghetti dinner. The tickets will still be $15, so those will be announced when they're ready. And the other matters, there was the art program presentation that was, or an outline that was given by Porterville Wellness Center. They're going to be conducting these art programs there at the Navigation Center. And we, as a committee, voted and approved $200 towards the materials to help with those art programs. There was a really great feedback from the, from the Porterville Wellness Center that gave a little rundown as far as why these art programs are therapeutic for these individuals. So it was a great, another great opportunity for those who, again, are connecting with services. There was a great discussion from Central California Family Crisis Center caseworker who talked about kind of the issue with individuals experiencing homelessness and how they get into housing. There's been a lot of complaints about there's not enough places and it's taking too long. And he gave a really great report, I believe himself, he had like three different apartment complexes that he manages as far as a caseworker. He has clients there. I mean, I don't know, I think it was like over 30 people that he's just managing their cases. And a big problem is these individuals have very important paperwork that they need, whether it's their ID, unemployment records, medical records, social security card, a number of documents that they need. And unfortunately, because their living situation, they lose these items. So they go, they get to the top of the list, they check in with them, and they're loss of phones or no way to communicate with these individuals. So you can see the frustration with him where these people are like, hey, I've been waiting on the list for a year, but he's like, every time I call you, you don't have what you need. And so it was interesting to see the process behind the scenes and him explaining, it's not because the agencies are failing, it's just that it's hard for those individuals to keep on task of what's required for them. And so it wasn't that the city or these agencies are failing, it's just the process that's difficult. So it's a really good explanation that it's not a matter of that we're not doing, or these people aren't doing their jobs. So it was a really great report. The subcommittee will be meeting tomorrow at Trinity Lutheran at 3:00 PM. And is there anything else, Councilman Rivas?
No, you pretty much summarized it pretty well, pretty much on point. So other than what he was talking about, those individuals not getting or having the proper documentation, that was very frustrating, and, you know, we felt his sentiment and echoed how he felt about that. So, but with that, I just would like to know that they are doing the best that they can out there. And it was a great meeting, and, but some of these homeless people don't have the resources that they should have in regards to IDs and driver's license, or for that matter, birth certificates or social security to get housed. And it's very frustrating, I can, we can see that during that meeting. But hopefully with the information that that gentleman provided, that they are aware of it, and hopefully we can get some on track for them to have some type of paperwork where they can store it in the event that when their time comes to be housed, they don't have to go to the back of the line again and start all over, which is very heartfelt. But, you know, they're rectifying it, so I just want you to know that the LINK Committee is doing the best they can. And they are working very hard to get these people housed. With that, I have nothing else. Mr. Beltran?
Yeah, there was an update from the SMART team. It's always great when they're there. They weren't there this time. But hopefully next time they'll be there, and I have a great report from them. They're working with those homeless and get your report. But anyhow, the next meeting will be July 2nd.
Thank you, gentlemen. Yeah, it's an impossible task. You're trying to help people that have mental illness or drug habits that take them down a path of destruction. And the sad fact is the best answer is institutionalizing them. And it's a hard thing to say out loud because people frown upon it, but it's the truth. They need the help. With that, we'll move on to Eastern Tulley Groundwater Sustainability Agency.
There we go. You got it right.
Councilman Green.
The Tulley ATGSA met on June 5th at 2:00 here in the city council chambers. Basically, nothing was discussed that had any, really any bearing on the city at this time. No action was taken in closed session. So there really isn't much to report considering that, and I don't remember the date, Mike, Mr. Knight, you might remember. When is the ATGSA to be phased out? Is it like a year from, like next July? There's, I think they're keeping it in force till, for another year approximately. And, but, next question would be, because the next meeting date totally escapes me.
So I don't recall any discussion of the phasing or dissolving of the agency. However, due to the conflict with the 4th of July holiday, the next meeting will be, I believe, the 10th of July?
Yeah, yeah, that's kind of what I was figuring out here. So it will meet on July 10th, next meeting. Hopefully it will be more reported. Thank you.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to Tulare County Association of Governance. I attended that meeting yesterday, June 16th. Some of my notes just portraying to the city of Porterville, some of the talk about the two roundabouts, Westwood, which will be starting next year, and then Rockford Roundabout will be starting sometime in February, is The Hope, Plano. Is the Hope, Plano, and 190 is still on hold. We had a presentation from a lobbyist out of Sacramento talking about the budget. There's big deficits, they're talking $12 billion budget deficit this year, which, they're talking $1.1 billion cut in transit budget. We already had to go through cutting our budget for the transit, and so there could be some serious shortfalls. You heard Vice Mayor kind of talk about that earlier talking about a $1.8 million transit, or excuse me, there's a $1.8 million transit improvement program. There was also a presentation from Tulare County. The Discover Tulare County Mobile Map App. I thought it was pretty neat where they have put together where all the murals are throughout the county, different roads, the Mighty 190 is on there, it's a really cool app. I'd invite you to check it out and find some destinations you haven't been to here in Tulare County. And we also talked about the importance of tourism here in Tulare County, and it's actually like in between oranges and pistachios as far as the amount of money it brings to our county. Also something that really stood out to me, Senator Hurtado's representative, Eric Coyne, talked about a bill she's working on for airport fuels tax and to keep it local. And so it's really focused on the Bakersfield Airport, but I think that if this bill does pass, it'll be significant for our airport, being that we have a lot of fuels cells for forest service and cow fires and regulators that are there. So it'd be good for the community. I'm gonna, I need to read the bill, but I'm considering writing a support letter. With that, that's all I have. Is there anything else that you'd like to add, Acting City Manager?
There was a public hearing for the unmet needs.
Oh, yes.
Regarding public transportation. And although there was a list of unmet needs that were found reasonable to meet, the only one that addressed for the city of Porterville is that we offer a one-day and a seven-day regional pass that we will be implementing with our new technology.
Thank you. And then also TCAG was bracketing that we were able to get $62.7 million in grant funds written for the countywide project, so thank you for that. With that, we'll move on to other, excuse me, oral communication. This is a time, if you have any comments, please come forward. You'll be limited to three minutes.
Brock Neely had us on record. If you want to correct the problem with the random enforcement for code, I'd recommend you look at the budget and add ten employees for Clayton. Make it, as you see a something, a problem, you cite it. Right now everything is on report only. And you're going to get randomism on report only. But if you make it an active system, they see something, they report it, it gets fined or corrected. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neely.
Darren Garrett, as far as Ken's building back here, I mean, his family hired me twenty-five, thirty years ago to put the roof on over there. And I just did his roof again two years ago. Those signs have been there for twenty-five years. They've been there for twenty-five years, so I don't, you know, and they're secured. I mean, we took them off and we reinstalled them, so they're secured. And just one other thing before I go. When I was raised, I was taught to respect law enforcement. If I didn't respect law enforcement, either the law enforcement took care of me, took me home, and my dad took care of me. The way that some of the people come up here and talk to the city council, they're not talking in love, they're talking in straight hate. And that's why people are watching these people come up here and talk in hate. So what do they think about our city? There's a whole bunch of haters in the city. You guys keep doing what you're doing, you're doing a great job, God bless you. Going home and going to bed.
Thank you, sir.
Gonzalez, Mr. Gonzalez. Ask somebody who's, this is the first time I've ever attended a city council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yeah, we can hear you, Mr. Gonzalez.
This is the first time I've ever attended a city council meeting and I am at, with the professionalism that has been taken place. There has been a lot of detail on everything that's been going on with water, with fires, with the transportation program, with King's View. There has been, a lot has been covered, and I have to say, I am very, I am very appalled at what the city is doing. I'm very proud of being a resident here in Porterville with all this, with all this taking place. And I hope that you guys keep on doing a very good job. I just have a problem and it's the information that I gather. I was wondering if there was any way that I could possibly receive a copy or something of all the things discussed in the council to refresh my memory.
You could, you can address it in other matters if he's still here.
Ken Whitman, my information is on record. Yeah, whoever I need to give my information to, if it's a phone number, email.
Either way.
Okay, I can take care of that. And I do appreciate everybody, you know, I just, like I said, I really appreciate, you know, common sense idea and fairness. And just some of the stuff that's taken place, I just listened to painting your windows. These windows, it's a new technology that's window tint to keep the sun out so their electric bills are lower. When their lights are on, you can see inside the building at night. When you're in the building, you can look out and see people in the parking lot and on the sidewalks. It's not paint, it's window tint. And I was also informed, if that didn't have signage and it was straight limo window tint, it'd be acceptable. You can't see through the window tint, but they're trying to keep the sun out. The new technology is not so much the old painted signs. It's a technology to control the, you know, the environment inside to save them some electricity. And at the same time, you get the benefit of putting your name and phone numbers and some ideas out there. So, you know, a little open-mindedness that these people have came up with over the years on technology for signage is pretty impressive. So I just, I appreciate you guys. And I do appreciate everybody that I've worked with so far in the whole city council. And I'm proud to be part of Porterville, no doubt about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitman.
City Council, my name's Ray Dean Strawn and my information's on file. I want to thank the city council for considering the judgment against me and the amount of $3,348 to be satisfied. You will never know how much this means to me and my family. I trust the new city council members to always do the right thing for the city of Porterville and those that reside here. We have a wonderful city and with the council's leadership, our town will continue to grow and be successful. I thank you again for doing the right thing. I'm happy this is all behind me now. Hopefully this will never happen to another person in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strawn. Is there anyone else? I'm not seeing anyone. Is there anyone online, Fernando?
Yes, Your Honor, we have one individual. Go ahead and bring him in right now.
Yeah, go ahead and bring him in.
Mr. Flores, you're on?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Mr. Flores.
Okay, I'll go ahead and start right now. Since the beginning of the year now, I have seen community after community harmed in this town by the council and the various nonprofits they hide behind. This includes the elderly at Plaza de Santa Fe, the library advocates, the airport community, the trans and youth community, Sherry Shields and the homeless community, the Fixy Kids community, the Bus Routes 4 and 6 community. What I wonder is how many more people will keep taking it and for how long? I think that you should be institutionalized for the crimes that I'm about to explain, Gregory Meister. In six months, you've held 12 closed-door meetings discussing 29 vague lawsuits with unknown plaintiffs, nine liability claims, and repeat labor negotiations. But the most alarming was the last meeting on June 3rd, where you secretly waived $3,348 in court fees for Ray Dean Strawn's failed half a million dollar lawsuit against the city. And then you waited 10 days until the public threw tonight's agenda and Charles Wisnan having to research the facts. Again, it was listed with no case names whatsoever, highly unusual for a media that followed case since 2021. Last February, the council had no problem putting this case on their closed-session list either. She used Ryan Sullivan of the Law Offices of Sullivan of Sullivan, and she failed. This isn't transparency, it's a pattern of the Brown Act that requires you to name lawsuits that you discuss, disclose votes afterwards, and prove closed sessions are for political favors. You've turned the anticipated litigation to a black box for no-bid contracts like the $7,000 deal that you have with KJUG, questionable payouts, Strawn's waiver, and labor deals that no one hears any action on. The blessings of liberty fraud, we believe that the blessings of liberty, knowing that they were running and would be able to win seats in the city council, orchestrated this stunt egging Strawn to break mask laws, get arrested, and then sue. We have direct evidence from one of Strawn's granddaughters, Kristen, even saying that McCurvy and Joshua Flowers put her up to not wearing the mask at the meeting. When the court called it frivolous and fines her, you bailed her out with self-insured retainer money. How many homeless or children could have been, at the library, could have been fed with that money? Is that money coming out of the city's attorney end-of-year bonus or her staff's? Judge Kirk Sheriff has also been notified, I emailed him yesterday, about you waiving court-ordered penalties. I thanked him for saving my city from fraud and told him about my theory about all of you. Finally, what would have happened if this fraud would have worked out and our city is paying half a million dollars to a council whose conflict of interest on voting on this nonprofit and its members are purposely committing political theater for fraud and illegal lawsuits against the city? Why did Beltran abstain? Does he know that he's being robbed too, or is he just scared to be an accomplice to this fraud? It sounds like his Link Committee could have used the funded, because it would have told, it would have funded the whole thing with this lawsuit. This wreaks a manufactured crisis to divert funnel public funds to Joshua Flowers and Ed McCurvy's nonprofits. We need to release all closed-session recordings about this vote. Never reschedule out recorded actionable items two weeks later. Disclose who really funded Strawn's lawsuit.
Please summarize, Mr. Flores, you've got 30 seconds, sir.
Okay, we need to do internal audit and investigate every lawsuit coming in and out, and also maybe how many times Sullivan has been used against the city and by whom. Investigate how many times the city of Porterville attorneys are missing court dates like they did back on November 13th for this case and see why they're failing to fight for the city. Is it possible that that was part of the fraud? Recover every penny of our money. You're stealing from the taxpayers in the city of Porterville.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Is there anyone else, Fernando?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to other matters. Councilman Beltran?
Great meeting, guys. It's 8:51. Great job on the Flag Day Ceremony, that was really fun. Enjoyed the time out there, great community activity and participation. I want to thank the West family for coming to here and seeing, although we are recognizing Mr. West, but as we all know up here, it's a family. You know, the sacrificing the time to give to others and to the community. So a great job, Mayor and Vice Mayor for recognizing that family. I know the little city recommend, or recognition for the chief and for Detective Flores. I know they don't want that recognition, but as the mayor has stated, that was, that day was unlike one we've had before with the situation at Manachee and this other serious situation going on. And even the chief was out there participating. And so I know that's the job they signed up for, but we just want to continue to thank them. He gives recognition to everybody else, but a lot of times it starts at the top. So thank you for your humility and not wanting to accept it, but also for your families to be here and know that you guys are appreciated. The last thing I'll talk about is the strong case that was just mentioned. I abstained from vote. She did donate to my campaign, but I was also shoulder to shoulder with her at many events that I did not like, the mandates that were coming down. Although I disagree with a lot of things that had happened at the time and things that still happen in the state of California, I still comply with the law. I don't expect to be given a pass because I disagree as much as I think that a lot of them are unconstitutional. I'm a big Second Amendment advocate, and there's a lot of things that I'm not allowed to do by the state of California. However, I abide by those rules because law and order. And so unfortunately, that was a dark time. This council, I think, is a reflection of the reaction to that. And so I think there's going to be some, some already changes that are happening. But I abstain just because, one, she donated and supported me and I didn't think it was fair for me to vote on that matter. But at the same time, I thought, although I disagreed, it was technically legal. And so for those who felt that it wasn't legal, they should have followed her example if they really wanted to make that bold statement. With that, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Beltran. Councilman Rivas?
I just want to say thank you very much for the staff reports and the agenda book that we had here today. I also want to acknowledge the chief for your outstanding performance and your detective. It speaks volumes of how your department is run with class, dignity, and honor. I also want to shout out to the fire department for doing their utmost daily list of performing their acts every time I go out in the city and performing. And they're on top of any emergencies that come abroad. And, but we as a society need to realize, when you hear sirens, you need to pull over. Give them the right of way. Because, you know, every second missed is a second, is life could potentially be lost. So with that, you know, I wasn't here on another matter, but I was not here with that situation with that lady that just spoke. I know her from campaign, but, you know, we do have to follow the rules. And, but I believe that she was mistreated from what I gather. And, you know, with that, you know, she stood up for what she believed was right. So with that, she fought it. And I just want to say that I'm glad that I had the opportunity to make things right and amend the wrong that she endured. And, but we still got to follow the law, we still got to follow the procedures. But in all essence, you know, we are as a society, we need rules and we need laws because if we have no laws and no, we wouldn't govern ourselves, it would be a chaotic society. So with that, you know, I like the gentleman that I work with up here every evening, every Tuesdays. They're common sense people, we have it out once in a while. But in the end, we're all looking for the best interests of Porterville and our constituents. And Mr. Interim City Mayor, thank you for putting this into perspective. The attorneys are doing an outstanding job, Fernando, he's doing an outstanding job. Mr. Knight and Aldi, Andrea and Andrade, Laura and Claudia, you guys are doing a fantastic job and I appreciate that. On the other hand, I just am very proud and honored to be up here and to represent my constituents here in town. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Councilman Rivas. Councilman Green?
I just want to comment on the Flag Day Ceremony because that was my first Flag Day that I attended. And visiting with our fine police chief over there, we were talking about, he had a strong presence at the Flag Day Ceremony because of some rumors that could be some protesters, and I really appreciated that. Got to see a lot of, we sure appreciate the boys in blue. And, but it was watching that flag go up and being furrowed by the wind, that really, quite an experience. that flag go up and being unfurled by the wind, that really quite a, quite an experience as I've always loved, because I think Mr. Smith, Howard Smith, started that, um, yeah, he did. He was the one, he's, he, and, uh, that, um, years ago, years ago, I think, back, probably back in the early sixties after the whole store burned down and he rebuilt, and I think that flagpole was installed then, that would have been in s, early sixties.
Sixty-two.
So it's been there, pardon me?
Vice Mayor said sixty-two.
Sixty-two. I said six, I said early sixties.
You did, sir.
Sixty-one, sixty-two, because I remember Howard Smith, he set up shop, now, try to get away with that these days. He set up, he set up his grocery store on a circus tent across the street. Crazy, huh? Now, you try to do that these days, you wouldn't be able to make it. But anyway, yep, and you see the flag go up, and not only that, as even coming when I come down going out to Weisenberger's or wherever to the grocery store, just coming down all of from where I live, you can see on a nice breezy day that flag, that huge beautiful flag is just flying free, and it's quite a sight to see. A lot of people have fought and died for that flag, and we all have to appreciate, and we need to think about it and appreciate it. And that's it, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Green. Uh, Vice Mayor McCurvy.
Uh, yeah, we don't want to take our freedom for granted, we don't ever want to take our freedom for granted, and, you know, a lot of people, I think, don't understand that in the proper way. The Constitution, we talk about it a lot, it's written to constrain the government, not the people. And, uh, people died for that freedom and that liberty. Thank you for those comments, Councilman Green. Um, you know, a jury is central to the jurisprudence in our country, and I know that there was some talk about closure tonight, and I think that, um, we didn't actually get everything that we wanted in that process, or nobody won. It was a bad deal. Uh, we didn't get to a jury, we didn't get to a solution, and, uh, it's great to just do a small thing to get some closure on that, to highlight it and say, let's never do that again, because, um, it was just, uh, it was beyond. I, I don't, I can't even remember, know anybody else in, in the county that, um, that that happened to or even around the state. It's, it's, it was a rare event, and it happened in our chambers, and I'm glad that we're learning from it, and I agree with the mayor's statement that we should probably put in the medical freedom, because you got a right to come and get on the record whether you're wearing a mask or not, no matter what's going on, and we should never do that. Um, doesn't matter how many rules you pass, that's your right, and the Constitution gives you that. Um, it's great to hear from the public on the progress on the homelessness. This is a community-wide event, people are pulling together. I know that, uh, there's a lot of people leading, we heard some great comments from, uh, Councilman Rivas and Councilman Beltran on the, on the helping the, the ones that need help and can get help or choosing help, and, you know, we're really working hard to ameliorate that problem and help our small businesses and get our law and order in the city in, in order, and it just seems to me, we got a lot of folks, and the mayor said this, we got a lot of folks that, um, don't want the help or have some mental problems, other things, and it's, it's, it's really strange to be babysitting adults, and we have to do this to protect our community, and, you know, hopefully we can continue to make steady progress on that and do the right thing for those folks and get them the help that they need, and I think that we're making great progress. It's great to hear it from the public, and I want to just continue to say thank you to everyone involved that's working on that, because it's not easy, and you really have to, you know, be empathetic to those folks that are in that situation, but you also have to be empathetic to the city and make sure that, you know, we're taking care of our city, and I think we're making some great progress there. The, the comments tonight about, we talked a lot about bureaucracy, as we do up here, but the comments from the audience tonight about how difficult it is to get a business license, the rigmarole that we go through, I think we've all had stories like that, I hope that's not a regular occasion, but it seems to me that needs to be simplified. It seems to me that things like that could be a web portal. We don't need to have a whole bunch of people, staff, to, to do bureaucratic check-in boxes if we can do simple stuff in a web portal. I'd like to look at some technological advances and how we can provide better service. Um, you know, and I, I think we could come up with some mantras, too, you know, uh, there's definitely some trust issues, not necessarily from the city of Porterville, but in the culture in general with the things that are going on in our world, and I think we could build trust in our city if we were focused on excellent service and excellent results, and I think we can build trust through excellent service and we can build trust through excellent results, and I think that's something that we have to think about here as a council, but also as a staff, and say, how do we build that trust? How do we provide a better service? How do we streamline these regulations? How do we make this better for the businesses so they can do business and not be worried about so much regulation and find some middle ground in streamlining? That was a great discussion tonight. Um, I actually have, uh, another matters idea, I think I brought this up before, as we get to the end of our budget year, I think there's some money left over that the council's going to spend, and we're going to spend some money on some flagpoles, we're going to spend some money maybe on another football banner, but if, if there's fifty thousand dollars left in our, uh, council spend, I want to, I want to consider making a grant program with that money that will help us with our, our murals and our artwork and our heritage and our patriotism, and maybe it's like, let's just say spitballing, if we had a grant program at the end of the year, um, that we use next year, we have to use it within a year, we do, if we have fifty thousand, we could do fifty, one thousand dollar grants, and as long as it helps commerce and our small business and brick and mortar and restore the spirit of our city and celebrate Porterville and display our motto around the city, I think I'd like to do that, and I'd like to put a program together like that. So I guess I'm making a motion.
So you're making a motion to put fifty grand?
Whatever's left.
This would be to set an agenda item to consider.
Yeah, so we have to put that on the agenda in the next meeting, but that's what I'd like to do, uh, with the, as we finish the budget year, we want to clear out that account, and we're going to start over again, I want to use whatever the remainder is to promote small business.
I, it's probably actually a reasonable ask, being, because I, I think the flagpoles are going to cost around twenty grand, we're still waiting on American Legion, uh, to, to get that number, um, and then you heard the request tonight, uh, so are you making a motion to put fifty grand into a grant fund for a small business in town currently right now?
Yes, brick and mortar, small business, but whatever's left over, because I don't know if it'll be...
It has to be set as an agenda item to consider that. I just want to make it clear, we can't actually take action since it's not on the agenda tonight.
Yes, well, it, it'd be a scheduled matter for next meeting.
Correct.
Yes. Okay, uh, does anyone have any comments?
No, Mr. Mayor, are we, are we going for a motion or...
Well, he has a motion on the table.
To put it on the, to put it on, a motion to put it on the agenda.
I'll second that. I'll second that, uh, with your, I'll echo your, your sentiments on that.
Okay, so you have a first and a second, are there any comments? So we're, just for clarification, this is to be on the agenda as a scheduled matter for a fifty thousand dollar grant fund for a brick and mortar, small business in the future.
Mayor, just one clarification on the flagpoles that you're working on, does that also include the flagpoles as part of this?
No.
Okay.
No. I, what are we, we're sitting on what, ninety-three grand somewhere in there?
Eighty-six or something, I don't know.
Yeah, so it's within, within the realm. I'm, I'm, there's a first and a second. Uh, if there's no other comments, we'll call for the vote. Passes four oh one. Okay, so that'll be on for scheduled matters next council meeting, are there any other comments, Vice Mayor?
No, that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, the, you know, the comments of, uh, we follow the laws, I, I, I agree, there are certain laws, uh, that, that we should follow, um, but I also, throughout history, world history, we've seen government make laws that are, are horrible, and I hate to go extreme here, but the Nazis made laws against the Jews, to throw them in concentration camps and, and perform a Holocaust on, on the Jews, and people went along with that because it was the laws. I believe as lesser magistrates, it's our duty to stand on natural law and do what's right and follow our Constitution and can, which we swore an oath to, to uphold, and, and individual liberty is tied into that Constitution, and so I'll, I'll continue to take that stand, and sometimes it's going against, uh, mandates or, or laws from, from the state that are unconstitutional, and we'll, I'll, I'll continue to take that stand. Um, I am happy to get closure on this, this ordeal and move forward with the city in, in better light. Uh, agenda item number three, met with the chief of police for, uh, their, uh, air conditioning and, and boilers, uh, they needed this remodel. Um, our Porterville Police Department works outside all day in the heat, uh, they deserve to come back to a station that's nice and cool, especially during the summer. Um, thank you to my colleagues for supporting this, it was an emergency, uh, item, and we expedited and we're getting it done, and I'm glad to see that. K-Jug, June twenty-seventh, um, excited for the people to come out and, and enjoy, uh, the event. Uh, June sixth, I, I got to, the great privilege of having Girl Scouts, uh, come and, and visit, they wanted to come and visit City Hall to get their democracy badge, and, and of course, I made sure to remind them that we live in a constitutional republic and explain that to them, and then we took a tour through City Hall, and I, I told the, the girls, you know, City Hall's a little boring, nothing against you guys, but we just don't have the lights and the action, so we went, it went down to the fire department, and what a treat. I, the fire department did such a great job, uh, they gave the little trinkets, you know, the Howard hat, the, they got to shoot the fire hose, see the firefighters get dressed, it was really, uh, a, a great thing, they had a great time, uh, and then I took the girls over to the, uh, police department. Now, I didn't think the police department could outdo what the fire department did, but went through, got to see the SWAT truck, and then they pulled out the K-nine, and, and we got to see the K-nine in action, and it, it was pretty good. Uh, and then we even got to see the, uh, the cells where we detained folks, it was, uh, a great, I got to see things that I've never seen before, and I'm glad I haven't seen a cell, so that's a good thing as a mayor of Porterville. Um, with that, it was a great experience, great time, thank you to city staff for making that happen, all of you, from police, fire, and, and City Hall, Engineering Department, Community Development, we went through it all, it was a great time. Uh, on June thirteenth, uh, we, I got the great privilege also to give the Outstanding Business Award to Valley Strong Credit Union, um, great business, providing jobs in our community, wealth in our community, and it was, uh, an honor to recognize them for that. Also, June thirteenth, I attended a Sierra View graduation for thirteen doctors, um, I won't share my whole speech, but I, I got some laughs, and, uh, out of the thirteen doctors that are graduating from the program, five of them are staying in the, the San Joaquin Valley, which is a great thing, congratulations to those individuals, and congratulations to Sierra View. And then, uh, lastly, Flag Day, June fourteenth, um, it was a great treat, city staff, outstanding job, once again, you guys have really come through and, and made the event that much better from the fire department, uh, being involved, lowering and raising the flag, uh, police being in force, making sure we're protected, greatly appreciate it, uh, and I, I'll tell you, I was disappointed only in the numbers of attendance, uh, you know, I, I campaigned on trying to revive the American spirit, the all-America city I grew up in, and I, I continue to strive to deliver on that, and so I, I think, I think it, the ten o'clock on a Saturday is definitely an issue, right? People are, got sporting events, I know there was a big funeral the same day, so it pulls people away doing those kinds of things, but next year, I think we should take an approach and maybe add a little more kid events, maybe a bounce house, something, stuff just to attract people in, to get the experience of Flag Day and honoring what, uh, Councilman Green spoke about earlier. Um, with that, that's all I have. Uh, acting city manager, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple, first and foremost, I want to thank Assistant City Manager Knight for being the acting, uh, city manager while I was on vacation, and, um, I wish him a wonderful vacation next week and happy birthday, I, that's coming up, I appreciate, uh, his efforts while I was gone, but in general, want to thank staff, um, we're a full-service city, we have staff working twenty-four-seven, um, from the street, works PD, fire, uh, Parks and Leisure last week provided a special needs, uh, swim day, um, the, the list goes on and on, I just want to thank staff. Um, although we're not meeting until July fifteenth, I did want to highlight, um, some meetings coming up and encourage the, the public to participate. Uh, later this week, on June nineteenth, we have the Charter Review Committee, and encourage the public to participate and, and be engaged in this process, it doesn't happen very often. Um, next week is our, our Budget Study Session, where we're going to go line by line through the budget, educate both the public and the council, um, on how, uh, the, the city functions. Uh, it's going to be, could be a long meeting, but I think it's going to be beneficial for all. Um, you mentioned the, the concert on the twenty-seventh, but the next day is Freedom Fest on the twenty-eighth.
Oh, yes.
Want to invite, uh, the community out to, to a Freedom Fest, it's, um, it's a big party, next year's going to be the biggest party, um, but, uh, come out and, and see, and celebrate, uh, our Independence Day. Um, uh, and speaking of that, just wish the council and the community a safe and meaningful Fourth of July. It's our opportunity to celebrate the freedoms that define our nation, just ask you to be safe and enjoy the holiday responsibly. I know our, our public safety folks are going to be working twenty-four hours, it's a, it's a busy day that they, they have to work on, um, just we, hope that the community, uh, stay safe and, and celebrate responsibly. Um, also on, uh, July ninth is the Heritage Committee, uh, meeting that we're going to be discussing the, the various activities that are going to be happening this next year, um, and then finally, just wish the, the mayor a safe and enjoyable vacation, and I can't wait for you to come back. You've been busy, sir, um, but, uh, I think from the staff's perspective, we ask a lot, I appreciate, uh, the leadership team, um, to think outside of the box and, um, figure out ways that we can execute the council's priorities and the mayor's vision, um, and we're working hard, I appreciate their efforts, and that's it, Mayor.
Mr., uh, Acting City Manager Tree, thank you. Uh, you sparked my imagination of something I missed here, so, two things, one, I apologize, Councilman Beltran, for not recognizing you at Flag Day, um, you just got lost in the crowd, sir, and we didn't talk that morning, so I, I think I took three tries to recognize everyone in, in the arena there, and, and I missed you, so I apologize. And then two, Freedom Fest is happening next year, we want to put on the biggest show, and, and so we have to, uh, reach out and try to find partners, and so I'd make a motion that we draft a letter, um, a letter that would go to our Commander in Chief, a letter that would go to Congressman Valadeo and Vince Vaughn, and I think that we should write State Assembly and State Senate as well in requesting, uh, a partnership in celebrating two-hundred-and-fifty years of American greatness, and I also think that we should attach or, or add some pictures of some of the things we're doing, like the military banners, uh, like our bus wrap, uh, and, and promoting that Americana spirit here in Porterville, and, and see if they'd partner with us on putting on the largest fireworks show in the Central Valley. So that would be my motion.
And again, that's just to put it, we'll put that, we can put that, I'm sure staff can put that together, and it can be a scheduled matter to be approved or on the, uh, next agenda.
Yes, yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Is there any other comments?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll call for the vote. Passes five zero. Uh, with that, uh, Acting City Manager, we got you hostage for a little bit longer before you go on vacation, do you have any, or, excuse me, Assistant City Manager Knight, do you have any comments?
No, no, thank you.
Mayor, I have just two, two more comments, um, one, to, to the police chief, I, I know you said you had a, an assistant, a police chief, uh, opening, but I, I wish you'd hoped to reconsider, um, I thought he did a fantastic job, um, putting that together and, and, and making sure that you're, you're... the families are there. Yeah.
I'm over it now.
And then, and then I don't know, the city attorney would like to make the announcement.
We were just going to note that we do need to go back into closed session and that no report is expected out of it. Thank you.
I was not going to adjourn the meeting. Okay, so at this time, we'll go back into closed session. Thank you.